All right.
All right. Good evening, staff. All the everyone in attendance. Um, come to November thirteenth, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty. All right. Shall we go ahead and begin? I think um. First, we have all the order to have done. Okay, on roll call, I think we have a number of specific things today. Um, first off, we have um Commissioner Chang, who is still out of the country right now. So believe. Do we have? Is stuff here? There he is. That do you have any questions that you would like to ask him? Or are we all all good?
Um, so Commissioner Chang, we have his address on the agenda, but he's fine. Um, but the deputy city attorney needs to ask Commissioner Chang question, Commissioner Walton questions.
Walton. Not Woodson. All right, so Commissioner Chang, you're in. It's all good. Seth has his hand raised up. So. Can we go ahead, Seth?
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I I don't know how to make my uh. Video visible, but in any event. Um, Commissioner Walden, I understand you are joining tonight under the Assembly Bill two, four, four, nine, just cause procedures.
Of of being sick and lightly contagious. I got it from somebody and I've given, yeah.
So not not great. Very sorry to hear that. Um, so you you meet the criteria and um, can you tell us whether you have anyone over eighteen in the room with you at this time?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, great. And if if that happens at any point during the meeting, you you're gonna have to let us all know.
You got it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so that takes care of the two administrative items. Uh, can we go ahead and do the roll call?
Commissioner Walton.
Here.
Commissioner Chang.
Yeah.
Commissioner Baron.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rana. Chair Woodson.
Here.
Uh, Commission Saint Commissioner Saint John.
Here.
Commission Jake Commissioner Jacobson.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, this is gonna be a very exciting one. Lots of emotion today, Commission. It's been a long day for all of us. So want to hear lots of emotion today, not here. All right. Next up, we have moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Is there somebody who would like to saw Commissioner Rana? Would you like to do that for us?
Legion to the flag leaning in the state of America.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, uh, we have, are there any special announcements or communications from the floor tonight? Uh, and these would be any actual items that are not on the agenda.
Uh, we do have a new staff member. Phil is here. This is his third day. Third day, so yeah, so that's the special announcement, so.
I'm happy it's. So welcome to Marina.
Thank you very much.
Come at a really good time in our history when it comes to planning, at least. Things have been picking up pace and we still have a lot to do in the next three to four years, so. Welcome. Um, nothing else? Nothing from the group in the audience online, anything? Yeah. All right, next up is we have ex parte communications for judicial matters. Anybody on the commission? Anything they want to raise? No, all right, moving on. On the consent agenda, the only thing we have on the consent agenda for tonight is approval of the minutes from our last meeting. On October twenty third. There any changes or comments on that? All right.
Want to make a motion to approve?
Commissioner Rana seconds.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yes.
Commissioner Saint John.
Yes.
Chair Woodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Rana.
Yes.
Commissioner Baron. Commissioner Walton.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There we go. Much more enthusiasm this time around. All right, next up, we have uh, we have two items tonight on our public hearings. Uh, first one is our Sea Haven Development Agreement Amendment number three.
And.
And I think as, hold on. As part of that, um. Commissioner Saint John, since he lives in Sea Haven, will need to excuse himself. So. He wants outside. He recused, he recused, right? And then we will come get you when this is over.
And we do have a special guest. Uh, Ishmael is our Public Works Director. He's been here for about. Yeah.
He's not new.
Season.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Uh, tonight, I'm going to briefly summarize the staff report regarding the proposed third amendment to the Sea Haven Development Agreement. I'm getting some feedback here. Um. Uh, as Guido mentioned, I have just under a year. December second will be one full year with the City of Marina, so. I can answer all your questions regarding uh, what we're doing now and and what's before you. If you have any questions about. Amendment number one, amendment number two, I I wasn't here. I don't understand. There was too much reading, so. Uh, Lane, Lane is here. He could probably uh, answer some of those questions. Uh, the main purpose of this amendment is to transfer the responsibility for constructing Sea Haven Park from the developer TruMark Companies to the City of Marina. This change allows the city to better control costs, use value engineering, and ensure the project stays within budget. Especially given the increased costs and delays experienced so far. Historically, the project started with a two thousand four development agreement, which was later amended into uh, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty three. To reflect changes in ownership, budget adjustments and funding sources. Previously, the developer was responsible for building the park with contributions from impact fees and other funds. However, due to the rising costs of uh. Construction. Now estimated at about uh, six and a half million dollars and unresolved differences, the city believes it's in the best interest to assume control of the park's construction. Staff recommends that Planning Commission approve the resolution to endorse this transfer. Eliminate the developers' remaining financial contributions related to the park and support the city's efforts to complete and control the project. Importantly, the environmental review for the project remains valid with no new significant effects identified. In summary, this amendment will enable the city to proceed efficiently with park construction, ensuring the project meets community needs and stays within budget. And now I'm available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks. And um. Commissioner. Commissioner Dickinson.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my only question and concern is uh, you just quoted six and a half million dollars. Um. Does the city have that money now, or does that have to be obligated in the future?
Uh, we have it, so we are um. Uh, to answer your question, yes, we were were prepared to fund, fund, uh, fully fund the park. Um, however, uh, as I mentioned, and it's in the staff report, we're looking at um. Ways to get uh. Same amount of stuff done or very close to it with less uh, less costs. So our landscape designer is is tightening some things up and making a few changes, so. Um, and and we'll. Um, and and we'll we'll see a better cost estimate soon.
Uh, estimated, you know, groundbreaking and that sort of thing?
So it it depends. Um. The best case scenario, and this is the uh, schedule that we're on right now. Um, the final tweaks to the plans will be done and we can put it out to bid in December, so about a month from now. Um, we would leave the bid open for at least six weeks because of the holidays. Normally, we can. Put it out for thirty days, but we'll do at least six weeks, possibly eight weeks for contractors to submit bids. That puts us in um. Late January to mid February, when we would receive bids, we would take an award of bid to council at the first meeting in March. Construction could start as early as April or May. Um, it's about a eighteen, it it could be a twelve to eighteen month um, construction process.
That's good news. Thank you.
Sure, Commissioner Rana.
Has the city take undertaken this kind of project earlier? And is the city sufficiently equipped to take on this kind of project now?
Yeah, we we definitely have the staff on in in place to take this on. Um, I've already started working with the landscape architect that designed it. Um. We have a a a plan in place for construction management inspections. We we're ready to go.
And in future, any projects of this nature? Will that remain an option that city does it himself rather than giving to developer?
Yeah, th- those things are usually taken on a case by case basis. Um, the Dunes Park is another one that we're we're gonna construct on our own. Um. Preston Park, we're gonna construct on our own. Uh. I've worked with three cities and sometimes it it. And I assume that's why uh, things are like this with Sea Haven. Um. It's normally better and faster if the developer does it. If he will do what he contractually agreed to. Uh, when he doesn't, then we take it over. So in the in the future, uh, it it would just be on a case by case basis. Thank you.
Commissioner Baron.
Thank you. I have a question about one of the numbers, so maybe I'll have to move the question over there. Uh, the nine hundred thousand dollars, there's a whole development of the. How the money grew through the years. Uh, you said that um, the city has the money. One of the points here is about nine hundred dol- nine hundred thousand dollars that the city can reimburse. It's not very clear to me. Um. I understand that now it gonna cost six and a half million dollars and there's something about five point seven million dollars from the developer. So I understand it's like eight hundred thousand dollars difference, but here we talk about in the document. Nine hundred thousand dollars. So there is some discrepancy that I I don't really understand what's going on with the money.
Yeah, this is Rene Ortega, the city attorney. Maybe I can try to explain. Um. So in twenty eighteen, I think the park budget was about three million dollars. The developers' contribution at that time or still is two point one million dollars. And so uh, to cover the gap between two point one, between three million and the two point one. In the agreement, there was a a mechanism for the city, for for the developer in this case. To provide the extra nine hundred thousand dollars and construct the park. The developer would then be uh, reimbursed after completion of the park. Those nine hundred thousand dollars. Now, the form in which they would be uh, reimbursed would be in the form of credits. For fees that they still need to pay. So they still need to pay part uh, impact fees. That is the five point seven million dollars. So those, so uh, because they still have to pay the park impact fees, they would get a credit of nine hundred thousand dollars after completing the park. So it's sort of a little bit of a complicated uh, borrowing mechanism for the city at the time. The city didn't have the five point seven million dollars in park fees that it has today. Uh, in twenty eighteen. So that's why that nine hundred thousand dollar sort of funding reimbursement mechanism was created at the time. Uh, it was, it was further refined in twenty twenty three during the Second Amendment. Uh, to the Development Agreement to create a more um, clear process as to how that reimbursement mechanism would work. Uh, now, this is all premised on the developer building the park. So now, given that the city is going to take over construction of the park. That sort of funding mechanism uh, is no longer relevant for two reasons. One. Uh, the city is gonna be building the park, so it doesn't require the developer contribution. And two. Uh, the city has collected. I believe about five point seven million dollars in part impact fees, separate and apart from the developers' two point one million contribution. So there's there there are different uh. I guess there are different buckets of of dollars in which uh, that we're talking about here.
Did that make sense? I was also around for amendment two, so that helps a little bit. Um. So the summary of, I guess, let me see if I can articulate it back, because I think there's still a little confusion, and I'll go to the other commissioners. Um. Back in twenty eighteen, we had, there was X amount of money set aside, and there was Y amount of money. That was totally accumulated at that point in impact fees. Fast forward seven years, we've now accumulated more in impact fees. Because they've continued to pay impact fees. So that's why we've gone up in the impact fees. If I get it right, and that's why we're currently sitting at five point seven million. In available impact fees in our bank account. And everybody shaking their head, but I want to make sure I understood it right.
That is correct.
Does that make sense? Okay. All right, um, no other questions? Done. All right, we've got two questions, um, both from either commissioners. So uh, Commissioner Chang.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, my question is still, uh, my question, the first one is the cost. I know the cost has increased to six point five million and the city have right now. I just heard it's five point seven million. So how's the city gonna cover the zero point eight million dollars? And where are the funds coming from? That's the first question.
Uh, the developer still has to pay the two point, two point one million dollars.
Okay, so that's enough to cover the six point five, correct?
That's correct.
Right, the second question is the park design. I know the city is taking over now, so. I just need to confirm the inclusion of the original design elements. Parking, playgrounds, and open field, et cetera. Do we have a park desire right now that we can present to the commission to look at?
It is the same design that's been worked on for five years. Um, it's been complete for. Uh, mostly complete for two years. Um, nothing has changed. All the same amenities are gonna be there. Uh, I don't have a, I have a, on my computer, I have a copy of the conceptual design. I can send it to Guido and he can forward it to the commission.
Yeah, it's good for the residents to know so that we are not compromising on the public side, even we take over. And um. And also the uh, questions on the legal and contractual liability. I just think um, clarification on the warranty indemnities and release of developer obligations. I don't know legally where we stand. Uh, is the developer is off right now? Is we are taking over totally a hundred percent?
You want to answer that, Renee?
So, yeah, with respect to uh, construction of the park, uh, yes, the, in addition to constructing the park, the developer needed to pay. Uh, two point one million dollars, so that obligation has not gone away.
No, the the construction risk, is it on the city solely on the city or?
Construction risk, yes. The construction risk is on the city. Uh, but the, I think the 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 staff's recommendation. Was the city also bears more risk in terms of the amount of money that it will spend. Um, to construct the park. Certainly, all the same contractual uh, risks with the construction contractor will. Um, you know, be covered by indemnity agreements when that contract is entered into with the construction company.
All right, so the city assumed the construction risk, correct?
Correct.
So I believe Commissioner Chang, if we go and Lane, you may be able to to fill this in. When we did amendment two and they presented the plan. As part of that, they would have had to maintain the, any of the warranty on the equipment. We would have maintained the park, but they would have. Maintain the warranty on the equipment and any of the landscaping, everything else. At this point, we will now take over that responsibility.
Okay, it's good to know.
Is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Totally put him on the spot just because he's here, but I guess it could have gone to anybody. Um, so I think that, Commissioner Chang, I think that was addressing kind of what you were talking about is the post care and warranty and liability issues. And I know some of it was already supposed to come to the city anyway when it was built.
All right, that's good. The next one is a E R, E I R, the environmental aspect and uh. Can we verify that we are going to compliance with the stormwater? The habitat and the lighting standards for this park design?
Yes, the, nothing has changed that would affect the E I R, so we don't have to do the environmental all over again.
Thank you, directors, for your comments. And uh, the last one is, how are you gonna communicate with the community that engage in this Sea Haven?
So we we now have a consultant on board, Tripeppy Smith, that that is helping us out with uh. Communications with the public. Um. And and there's just tons of social media posts and and things that they're working on as. A company that specializes in this, and we are going to utilize them to um, improve all communications with. Uh, with residents, not just this park, but with everything that we do.
Well, from now to the start of the constructions and do you have a timeline of communicating with the community?
Uh, that is the next thing that we're gonna work on, but yes, we will be working on a timeline for that.
All right, it will be on the website, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. That's all I had, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Walton, I think you had your hand up before. Do you still have one to make comment?
No, sir. Thank you, Chair. I, Commissioner Chang asked my question, what's the difference in price? Uh, and how the city, all that stuff just got answered, so now I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, um. I don't know where to begin. I guess I'll start with, I'm. Not with the city. I'm frustrated as a resident and as the planning commission, and now having gone through this. Multiple times now with amendments of how do, I just want, how did we get here? How, I mean, literally, how did we get to the fact that there is now a lack of trust that the developer is going to build this park? And I, and the reason I want to get to it, because. We have multiple other things in that that development, including their entire greenway right of way and commitments that they've made. To their future residents and to the city. And they've pushed this off for years and to the point that now we're taking this over. And I'm concerned that if they do this here, what other aspects of the development are they still going to push off at this point? Thanks, Lane.
Great question. Um, and I don't want to talk bad about anyone or any developer, but I think from the past history. Yet, the city was in um. Settlement discussions for well over two years trying with this developer. Um, with issues with the original agreement trying to move it forward. And so we've had just a long history of. Struggles and challenges with with this developer um, on. This park is just a small issue. Um, but we came to the conclusion that that we have got to take some of these things over to get them done. And the park is one. The other frustration the residents have. Is regarding the landscaping that's supposed to be done on Marina Heights Drive. Again, the city has actively, we have a path forward on that that we're working on. And so. Um. Not to say anything bad about anyone, but what we're trying to do is. Move this project as quickly as we can, resolve the obstacles and and with this part. That's the quickest way and and it just happens to also be the most uh, cost effective. Um, as Ishmael said in the staff report, it typically, uh, and the. The thought originally was, the developer is moving forward, they're building all these pocket parks, they have their team in place. They can just build the park, get it done quickly, and you can see five years later, we still haven't been able to resolve it. The good part is, as Ishmael said. Park design is the same. We have actually already ordered the park equipment, and I think part of it. Is here, if not all of it. Park equipment has a lead time right now of eighteen months. So the good part is, we already have it. And and so that park will be going in really quick, I think, much quicker than eighteen months. We have a great design. Maybe Ishmael moves projects forward really quickly. We have the Wallace Group that is helping us on contract management, so I feel pretty confident. Think the long term, most of these issues over time are getting resolved with the developer.
Alex, I'm, I just, it's. I understand your perspective. I I just, it's very. It's frustrating to have the developer and have come in and make commitments and 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 eke out commitments from us. To then turn around and we have to come back and we take over this. And I don't disagree that us taking it over will get the park done. It's been. This should have been done, park should have been built five years ago. Um. And I think on the development side, I think that was a good, and thanks, I appreciate that, Lane. Um. I think Ishmael, the only, the other comment that I have was, on the design, there were, there were. This would be the only design thing I'm, I'm just gonna throw it out there. There was conversation at the time. Of putting in, there were two tennis courts, and the two tennis courts were gonna become. Four pickleball courts, and then maybe in tennis courts, because, well, the residents wanted tennis courts, but the city wanted pickleball courts. The reality is there was more than enough park space there because there was a lot of green space still. Um, the reality is, the developer no longer owns this park. We are now building the park. And there was a need, I think, for tennis courts. I think, I don't disagree with there was, but I think there was also a big, big desire to have the pickleball also. Um. Is it possible to make? Any type of minor design look at on this, on the city's part to address some of the, going back to. Two, three years ago, when the community had, we provided impact or the community provided input on the design. To go back and look at some of those elements that were asked for at the time. And see if those are things that, given that we are not gonna be paying the admin overhead, I mean, part of this cost savings is gonna be the admin overhead that we don't have to pay them. To manage the project. I mean, so we're keeping six to eight percent savings just on admin. On this, um, just wondering if we could do that also, just because there were a number of design elements that were suggested by the by the local community. That at the time, we really were beholden to the developer. I mean, we had to, the developer at one point wanted to put in a three hole golf course there. And at least we didn't get that. But I just want to make sure that we're building it for the city and what the city residents want.
You want to answer it? So, uh, yeah, uh, I I'm not sure, um. Right now, the amenities are, of course, the restroom facilities, parking, there's playground for children, there is a a dog park. Uh, there's some open green space that will be turf where, you know, kids can go out there and. Kick a soccer ball around or throw a football or something. There's some native area, so this park's gonna be, uh, you know, it's gonna be more than just.
Yeah, and I think there was still, there was still a, a six hole frisbee golf.
There's a nine hole, nine hole disc golf will be put in. It it was gonna be six and the designer was able to get three more holes, so you have a full nine. And uh, there was four pickleball courts. Um, with the recent uh, feedback that we've received for all other parks. Um, we doubled that, so there will be eight pickleball courts at this uh, park. And uh, the tennis court was moved to the Dunes Park.
Okay, and the only reason I, the the reason I bring up the tennis is that. And this, this is a bigger community thing that really ties back to MPUSD. Is that MPUSD just needs to have four tennis courts total. To be able to support JV and varsity tennis. Now, I know that because I, my son was doing his Eagle project five years ago, started it during COVID, and that came up. As a requirement. as a requirement. So one of the ideas was to be able to use, split the varsity to Los Angeles Park and take the tennis courts at, at, at Sea Haven and be able to use that for the JV. And that way, they could, we could actually have tennis as an option for the high school um, within our community. And now that we've been, now we've migrated over to pickleball, I get it. At the same time, tennis is a really high participation, low impact, low cost sport for our, our high school in our community and something that, again, builds teamwork. And it would be something that I know it's not on PK's list of, of improvements. It's just kind of there, but I know it's something that was a desire of the city or of this, of the school, of residents, students and families to have. And so I guess I'd just throw that out there that at some point, again, it's not, we don't have, we don't, we're not beholden to MPUSD, obviously. I mean, we're our own city, but knowing that that was something they wanted to do and it's something that as a sport, they can't do because they just don't have enough courts to, that around by, I'll just leave that as an open item for you to, to just have knowledge about.
Chair, Chair, if I may, uh, I think the public hearing portion, I'm not sure if you were going to get.
I am, because I have one other question, but I am going to go to the public. So, yeah, that works. That's a good breaking point. Thanks. You know, fifteen people on the call today. This is a record. All right, um, Guido, do we have a public comment on this?
I don't see anybody online that's raised their hand, Chair Woodson.
Okay, once, twice. All right. I tried. My only other comment, um, I think is, let me see if I got it right. Maybe I didn't get the answer from the chair, right? Timeline transfer. Yeah, I think I'm good. I mean, I'm fine with it. No other questions from the commission? Yes, you absolutely can make a comment.
I had the conversation with some friends in Sea Haven and there is some rumor, maybe I should call it, that they think they have to pay for the, the park. So if they don't, maybe it can be added to the messaging on, on the net, uh, social media. Uh, they also are very much looking forward for this park, so I think they, they are paying attention to what's going on with it. So I just want you to know that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, their impact fees, they are paying for it indirectly because their impact fees are paying for it. So I think that's, the answer is yes, they are, but they're paying it through the developer impact fees that, that they've already paid in when they bought the property.
I think what you're hearing is, um, the residents there will pay for the ongoing maintenance of the park. That is still in the agreement, so um, they will pay up to fifteen thousand dollars a month. So once that development is fully built out, that is what they will be paying for the park is the ongoing maintenance cost.
Okay. All right, um. Oh, I know what my other comment was, and this was, it's more just an information piece. Totally understand where we stand. This is the right decision to move forward with, and that's where the vote's going to go, I'm going to assume. Um, at the same time, going back to the communications outreach, I think it's very important to reach out to Pat and Place and all the residents that are there with the park that's being done. Not because of we're not putting priority on, on the building and renovations over there and upgrades. More just the sequencing now is going to be a little bit off. And that's going to be sequenced, our, this park will probably be sequenced and break ground prior to some of theirs. And we just need to make sure that they're aware that this was an opportunity, this was an opportunity issue driven by the developer and not going against them and us trying to segment that part of our city population. Because I know that there is that, we all know, like, there's a feeling at times that we don't care about them. And so we do want to make sure on the communication side, this is, this was done for a monetary reason. It was in the betterment of the city to get this done faster. But because, as you point out, Wayne, because we already have a lot of the materials already on site, we're going to be able to sequence this and build this at a faster rate than what normally you'd be able to build a six-acre park. Um, that said, uh, we, can you put a motion up? It's in there. Probably scroll up a little bit. All right.
Yeah, um, a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the City Council approve the third amendment to the Sea Haven Development Agreement to transfer responsibility for the construction of Sea Haven Park from the developer, Trumark Companies LLC, to the City of Marina and find the project is consistent with the environmental impact report, S C H number two zero zero three zero two one zero one two, certified for the Marina Heights Sea Haven specific plan.
I'll second.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Vice Chair Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Rana?
Yes.
Chair Woodson? Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. I am, I am going to assume that the city is, residents of the city are going to be very happy with this decision and that this will be a great thing forward because that has been a big blank spot in the city on that path, on our entrance way into the city for years now. So this will be great to finally see something broke there. Um, and that's, I really think that overall, that's going to have a great visual. Going back to when you enter the city, that's a big, that's, that is our, that is our number one commuter route and transportation route into our city. So people outside of it will see this every day as it's being built. So I am very excited to finally see this being built out. So, thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Ishmael, for coming and presenting tonight. All right. You found your way back. Welcome. Sea Haven survived and the agreement was that you were going to pick up all of the developers' costs of fifteen, the fifteen thousand, the fifteen thousand a year maintenance costs would come out of your dues. Right. All right, next up on the list is LCP. Hold on. What's the title? All right. I obviously can't read. I should just say it's the LCP land use. There it is. Uh, next one up is the Land Use Plan Amendment with Local Coastal Program Update from Allison Hunter.
Good evening, Chair Woodson, members of the Planning Commission, members of the public. I'm Allison Hunter, Planning Manager with the City of Marina. Um, I'm going to just give a quick introduction and then hand it over to our consultants who are going to go through this PowerPoint. And then we'll kind of come back together and answer any questions. Um, but as you know, uh, we've been working hard on this comprehensive local coastal program update. It will be for the implementation plan and the land use plan portions of the whole LCP. Those two portions make up the whole LCP. Um, we're going to dive into some details, but I also, speaking of aspects of the LCP, wanted to fill the Planning Commission in on our exciting late-breaking news. Um, the Coastal Commission, just this past Friday, approved our coastal hazards and sea level rise amendment. We got about ninety-nine percent of what we wanted. It was actually exactly what we expected. Um, the commission would not allow us to fully ban hard armoring shoreline protection devices just outright. They've just said, no, you cannot do it. Um, however, the way they uh, allowed the language to occur and they made some modifications, but it made for very, very strong policy language and development standards that will result in a practical ban on hard armoring because the ability to uh, provide hard armoring is, is so, such a tiny little pinprick of like fitting into all the boxes that it's going to be very, very difficult to, for somebody in the future to um, install armoring along our coast. So it's really a win. Um, I'm hoping to take the, this final, final coastal hazards amendment back to the council for acceptance because the commission did make some changes, so the council has to accept it one more time. Uh, and then it will be fully certified. And then that will be enveloped into the comprehensive plan as one of the chapters uh, in the land use plan. So we're excited about that. Um, and now I'm going to hand it over to Esme Wall and Anastasia Aziz of EMC Planning. They're our consulting group, along with Integral Consulting. Uh, and they're going to walk you through our draft land use plan.
Thank you, Allison, uh, Chair and Commission members. I'm pleased to be here with you tonight with Esme Wall, uh, Senior Planner. And my name's Anastasia Aziz. I'm a principal at EMC Planning Group. Um, so next slide, please. So, um, why is the City of Marina doing a comprehensive update of their local coastal program? Um, so as you know, uh, the City of Marina has a portion of the city that's located in uh, the coastal zone and subject to the Coastal Act. And part of the um, Coastal Act directed that all cities uh, with a coastal zone have to have a local coastal program that regulates the coastal zone and coastal development permits um, are the permit type that are used to regulate development. So the City of Marina um, does have a local coastal program that was certified in nineteen eighty-two. The Coastal Act was passed in nineteen seventy-six, I would say. Um, so um, in less than ten years, good for Marina, got that done. There's some jurisdictions here that still don't have a certified local coastal program like the City of Monterey. So all their coastal development permits still have to go up to the Coastal Commission. So good for Marina. You're not in that position. You're in the position of updating your um, program. Um, the Coastal Commission uh, was um, had supplied grant funding for this project. Um, so that is uh, what is funding this project and update. And since nineteen eighty-two, um, there has been not only new guidance on sea level rise for hazards that has already um, come through this commission and council, as Allison just mentioned, and um, been uh, was at Coastal Commission last week. Um, but there's new guidance on environmental justice, tribal cultural resources, biological resources, um, climate change with the sea level rise and accessory dwelling units uh, within the coastal zone and throughout the rest of the city. So there's other things to update as well. Um, also, the mapping was, was older, and so we're modernizing the mapping. Um, and also, uh, we're looking just to update the style and format to make it a little more uh, user-friendly and easier to read. Next slide, thanks. So this graphic just illustrates the process and where the city is. Um, to date, we've had stakeholder and community outreach. We started this back in October twenty twenty-three. That's when we started the hazards. Uh, so we consider that part of the outreach and um, educating the community about what the plan is and why we're doing this. Um, we came up with some frameworks, um, policy frameworks, building on what the city already has. Um, uh, removing some older things that were in there and out of date regarding land uses. And then also, again, integrating some of these new guidance and new um, topic areas that needed to be addressed. So um, we had uh, a multiple field trips. There was a questionnaire, um, workshops, including one that was integrated with the general plan because that's another large policy document moving its way through the city. Um, and so now here we are with a public uh, draft for Planning Commission consideration uh, before we take it to uh, City Council. Um, after City Council, once the, the uh, policies are more or less in place, and we've also been working with Coastal Commission staff to make sure that the, the policies that uh, we're hearing about from the community and city staff, the, this commission and council, um, we've been working with Coastal Commission staff to make sure that they're on track and they're, it, it's not veering too far from what the commission might accept. Um, so it's been a very much a collaborative effort. Um, then we'll uh, come back with the implementation plan, which is really the, the codes to implement these policies and then submit that as a package to the Coastal Commission. And like Allison said, once the, both the land use plan and implementation plan are approved by council, they'll be submitted to Coastal Commission. Will they go for uh, before the Coastal Commission for a final um, certification? So here again, I already touched on this, um, but Marina here just graphically depicted is um, the City of Marina boundary, and then in the blue, you can see is the coastal zone. Um, it's primarily east um, uh, west of Highway One, but there is some east of Highway One, and that includes Lockpad and Park, the Marina Landing Shopping Center and a very small residential area. There's not a lot of residential um, in Marina's coastal zone at all, only about thirty-two parcels. Um, the uh, local coastal program, if you see south of Rain Dollar Avenue, sort of that long um, elongated uh, portion, that um, is, will be new to City of Marina. It's currently under Coastal Commission jurisdiction, but that was identified in this process to um, include that in the City of Marina. Um, it's characterized mostly by, as you know, um, environmentally sensitive habitat area, the beautiful and imposing sand dunes that are here in Marina and also wetlands as well. Um, so it's a, a unique uh, coastal zone. So the next slide. So the land use plan sections uh, that we'll be uh, touching on, um, again, this is uh, the policy document to govern that coastal zone area that was just depicted on the map. Um, the introduction of framework, public access and recreation, which is one of the primary, public access is one of the primary tenants of the Coastal Act to make sure that it's accessible to all people um, and is not um, subject to private uh, uh, development, but that everyone can access it. And we've been trying to look to with accessibility. Sometimes it can be hard to get to Marina's uh, coastline to get through those sand dunes, but um, the sand dunes are a part of what make it gorgeous as well. Um, the biological resources, environmentally sensitive habitat area, marine resources and water quality. Allison touched on the coastal hazards. Again, that was just before the Coastal Commission last week. Um, land use and development, scenic and visual resources, tribal, cultural and historic resources and environmental uh, justice. So we will be touching on some of these items uh, to give you an overview. And now I will pass it on to Esme and she will talk about uh, some of these portions.
Uh, thank you, Anastasia, and good evening, Chair Woodson and Commissioners. So public access and recreation is one of the sections of the land use plan and is one of the major tenants of the Coastal Act. Um, public access, the ability for all people to access California's beaches is one of the reasons that the Coastal Act was created in the first place. It was a voter initiative in response to development in the seventies that was cutting, private development that was cutting off access to the beach. And so that's part of the reason we have the Coastal Act today. So what does access look like in Marina? Um, most of Marina's coast is in public ownership. So you have State Parks, who owns Marina State Beach, and then there's the Marina um, Coast Water District, the Sanctuary Beach Resort, and there is uh, required public access easements through the Sanctuary Beach Resort as part of their coastal permit. Um, just north of there is the um, Monterey Peninsula Regional Parks District, Marina Preserve, and then just north of that is the former C-Mex site and sand mining was uh, seized a few years back, and that property is actually required to be turned over into public ownership. So that whole northern portion of Marina's coast will also be in public ownership. So even with all this public ownership along Marina's coast, access is still quite difficult in some areas to get to the beach, just due to the fact that the large, beautiful sand dunes create topography um, and kind of barriers to access the coast. So our policies in this draft land use plan um, try to strengthen Marina's um, ability to create um, more accessible access to the coast by collaborating with these public agencies to help um, maintain and build new accessways to the coast. So the figure shown there shows the existing um, accessways and then in the light blue shows some proposed potential future new accessways that could be developed. Uh, thank you. So the next topic that we wanted to highlight is the land use designations within the coastal zone. So the image on the left are the existing land use designations under the current local coastal program. And then the image on the right are the proposed land use designations. So you'll see that um the City of Marina is mostly open space. And then there's some general commercial, visitor-oriented, commercial, public service facilities in a small area of residential. So the one proposed land use designation change between the existing and the proposed is to remove the coastal conservation and development land use designation that um covers the former C-Mex site, which we're now refer referring to as the North Dune Site. So the reason for this is that the coastal conservation and development land use designation allows sand mining. And with the cessation of sand mining, um, and the requirement for that large property to be put into public ownership, it makes sense to move that into open space so that it can be protected as open space and dune preservation with public access like the rest of Marina's coastline. Um, yeah, so we'll discuss next the proposed allowed uses within the open space land use designation. And again, the open space land use designation was almost all of the area west of Highway One and then east of Highway One, Lockpad and Park. So that is what is subject to the open space land use designation. So the current LCP allows public recreation facilities in the open space land use designation, but doesn't clearly define what those are. So in this proposed uh LCP update, we have included some suggested definitions for types of recreation that are allowed within the open space land use designation. So this includes passive recreation. This is lower intensity recreational uses such as walking trails, hiking trails, boardwalks, picnic areas, interpretive signage, botanical gardens, community gardens, and nature observation areas. And then active recreation is another type of recreation that could be allowed. And it's more moderate intensity uses um can include community centers, bicycle paths, campgrounds, and ancillary uses supporting public agencies like parks, housing could be an example of that. Um, and then finally, coastal dependent recreation would be allowed in the open space land use designation. And this is a type of recreational use that requires uh a location adjacent to the sea to function at all. So like a a coastal trail or paragliding related infrastructure. Next. So the um allowed uses in the open space land use designation have been divided between permitted uses and conditional uses. So the the difference is that permitted uses would just need a coastal permit. And conditional uses would need a coastal permit as well as a conditional use permit. So there'd be another kind of layer of oversight and findings that would need to be made for uses that are listed as conditional. So this slide is showing the permitted uses, and they are the more passive recreation types that I just discussed. Um, preserved, open space, beach access, walking trails. Um, and again, this, these uses would be allowed um in the open space area west of Highway One and also on Lockpad and Park east of Highway One. Next slide. So the conditional uses, and these would be required, like I said, to have the coastal permit and the conditional use permit. Um, and they include more active recreational facilities such as bicycle trails, camping facilities, ancillary uses, supporting public agencies. Um, and again, any future projects in open space would go through the public process and public hearings um require permits in SEQA. All right, so I'll hand it back to Anastasia to go over Marina Landing.
Thanks, Esme. So this next slide uh depicts on the map um the Marina Landing Shopping Center, uh, which I think all of you are familiar with. The current land use designation is general commercial, and this is within the coastal zone. So it's subject to um the coastal, the city's uh local coastal program and coastal development uh permits in addition to other city permits. So this is within the coastal zone. Um, so right now, the current uh land use designation is general commercial, which allows retail stores, commercial shops, um hotels and other uses uh with similar characteristics. So um what's being proposed after a number of um workshops um uh and outreach efforts is retaining it as general commercial, but adding an allowed use. Um, and that would be supportive in transitional housing. So that's in alignment with the city's uh housing element to allow that type of um housing use throughout the city. So we're adding that for your consideration. Um, and then there was a market analysis that was done by HDL um back in the spring that did support um retaining um it as retail uses. And it stated that Marina generally has a strong demand for retail space and that there are opportunities for fast casual dining, personal services and convenient retail, and also demand for hotel development. And I know this has also been discussed as part of the general plan um update. Um, and I think the general consensus coming out of those meetings, but this is before you again for consideration, is to retain it as a general commercial with that one exception for transitional and supportive housing. Okay, and next slide. So scenic and visual resources is also an aspect um that the coastal commission guy has guidance for for policies, and that is to protect the scenic qualities of coastal areas um because they're considered a resource of public importance. And again, I just have, I love the sand dunes here. They're amazing. Um, I think they're visually and and um incredible and a real scenic resource as well. And so many people see them when they enter the Monterey area um on Highway One. It's really like a gateway, like welcome to the Mon, I feel it's a gateway, like welcome to the Monterey region here, the sand dunes. So we want to make sure Marina has done a a great job preserving those. So we just have policies in place to make sure that 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 trajectory that stays the same. Um, and then there are policies for marine resources and water quality, primarily uh focused on stormwater runoff. Those are already state regulations, but we're just integrating them into this document as well uh to make sure that water quality, especially after rain events like today, um is clean before it's discharged. And the next slide. Um, so tribal and and cultural resources, um, the the treatment of those have changed and evolved over time. So there's new coastal commission guidance on that um that was issued in twenty eighteen for tribal consultation. And so there are new policies in there to conform with that. Um, primarily, it's to have tribal consultation early, similar to, if you're familiar with AB fifty-two in SEQA, it's to consult with the tribes early and often on a government-to-government um platform. And then the uh cultural resources and historic resources policies were updated again to reflect the changes in state law regarding protection and and preservation. And environmental justice, again, is a newer topic uh that was not included in the city's existing local coastal program. Uh, but I know that there's been lots of work related to it for the general plan update. So we're just building on that and also incorporating the coastal commission guidance um to make sure that there is equitable access to the coastline from income and also abilities. And there is a small, you know, portion of this area of your coastal zone that is residential uses, but we're also including the transitional and supportive uses again as an equity aspect um for people living in Marina. Um, and also enhancing civic engagement, which I think the city does a good job at to try to um have outreach materials available in multiple language in a variety of of outreach methods. So those are all in that EJ section as well. And then I'm going to pass it back to Esme for a discussion on biological resources.
Thank you. So biological resources, also commonly referred to as environmentally sensitive habitat areas or ESHA under the Coastal Act. So this is a coastal act and LCP specific term. And it's really any area where plant or animal life um or their habitats are rare or valuable. And so the City of Marina has a whole lot of ESHA. It's pretty much all of the coastal sand dunes, um, the wetlands, vernal ponds, and even like degraded ESHA that has been impacted is still considered ESHA because it still could provide habitat for plants and animal species. Um, so even degraded ESHA under the proposed local coastal program is provided these protections. So the um development in ESHA is limited. It's limited to uses that are dependent on the resource. Um, if develop, like such as a walking trail. Um, if development is proposed in ESHA, a biological assessment would be required. And if impacts can't be avoided, they have to be mitigated for at a specified ratio. And that, those ratios will be identified in the implementation plan, which will follow. Um, so there's one kind of change I wanted to highlight between the existing and the proposed. In the existing land use plan, um, development within a hundred feet of wetlands was prohibited. In this um proposed draft land use plan, there's certain allowances for development within a hundred feet of wetlands. And that that includes restoration activities, nature observation, and also um accessory dwelling units. So the residential within Marina along Mimi Court and Robin Drive is actually within a hundred feet of the wetland there. And so those residential properties would still be able to have ADUs. That's been identified as a a means of more affordable housing within the city. So I just wanted to go over the outreach and engagement one more time that has taken place to culminate in this draft before you. Um, there were multiple in-person workshops, field trips to Lockpad and Park and Marina State Beach. A few questionnaires were released. And uh we've been posting all of our summaries and documents on the Marina LCP update website. So that continues to be updated, and you can see what's happening um with the project there. And on that website, there's a detailed community engagement summary that goes into detail on the public comment received and the survey results. So we wanted to open it up for discussion to the planning commission. Um, we're happy to hear all of your thoughts. Two particular things that we know that we'd like to get some feedback on are the thoughts on the open space allowed uses and also um the recommended uh use or land use designation for the Marina Landing site, if that should be retained as is or mixed use. And going back to Allison.
Thanks, Anastasia and Esme. Uh, just to kind of wrap that up and and remind the commissioners that you did receive a few letters from the uh public. A few comment letters were emailed, and also I provided hard copies there. Um, I'm hoping that perhaps we could go out for a public comment like right after our presentation, so we can hear what the public has to say. That way it could perhaps inform discussion a little bit further. Um, and that's it for staff report.
Thank you very much. Looking at the attendee list, there is a wide assortment of capable and very vocal people that I'm hoping to hear from tonight. So we'll go ahead, and I think that's a good idea. Um, I'd like to go ahead and I think there's a, I guess before I do that and or wrap up, wrap our head around everything that we've just been, because this is a big document, a big subject, and and a lot of things to talk about. Bottom line is, on one side, we have just the land use component of it that we need to talk about. We're generically, how do we want to look at things from the city? And that's most of what was talked about. We do have the coastal component of, I have a significant question. I do, like, before I go to the pub, I do have one question out on that that I want to make sure I understand, because I want to make sure the public has that side of it, too. And then we have a specific on a couple of specific blocks or parcels within the city to address also, and what does that look like? And so, that said, the only question I I want to make sure I understand, going back to the boundaries of the coastal zone for us on the diagram very beginning, is I always, where is the boundary when we cross over US one south of Bay? Now.
That's a very good question. So that, the light blue sliver there is City of Marina. The boundary includes the Tam Sea right-of-way to the west of the highway. So, and that's existing right now. However, when ORD uh was divvied up amongst all of these public entities, the coastal commission retained that area as their own permit jurisdiction.
Right, so with the surf line, that was under there.
And that was, that's why that was.
That's why I'm raising this is because when that cut session came up, the only thing that we were responsible for was the area on the north end where where Highway One goes over the city property.
Correct.
And none of this was there. So this map is actually changing that.
This map is changing that, and we actually discussed that with coastal commission staff specifically, and they encouraged us to, you know, take ownership of this swath. It it will be uh proposed for open space land use designation, of course, like everything else along there. Um, and it will have no effect on the surf line or any of the MST project going on right now. But uh in the future, that would become under the city's CDP authority.
Not open that can of worms, but it just leave it that that is a interesting timing decision. And I will just leave it at that. Um, there'll be a lot of discussion, I'm sure, that comes out of this overall online and other places when people really could latch on to this. Um, okay. I just wanted to make sure that when I looked, that that's exactly what I was read and saw, and that that's what the coastal commission was recommending to switch. All right, that said, why don't we go ahead, and I'm going to open up the public comment first? Uh, we'll start with Jeff, since he's got his hand up. Trying to add you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to address the planning commission. Uh, my name is Jeff Markham. Uh, I am a citizen of Marine. I'm also the Ward One Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District Director, but I'm going to be addressing the commission as a citizen tonight. Uh, I'd like to thank Allison Hunter for taking on the local coastal program update. It's a big project and very much needed. Uh, and uh just the the important change of the North Dunes area to remove the um coastal development uh designation is is worth doing even by itself. And I really liked the definition that the consultant had about active recreation. I think it's probably the best uh definition that I've I've seen so far, so thank you for that. Uh, I have written to the planning commission, and hopefully you've received my comments about specifically the Lockpad and Coastal Wetlands Community Park. And I emphasized part of the name Coastal Wetlands. The intent of this park, when it was created by the coastal commission, I'm sorry, by the Coastal Conservancy, uh, NPRPD in the City of Marina, was to preserve a very unique coastal vernal wetland system. I don't know if you've ever seen the Balance Hydrologics two thousand twelve management plan, which unfortunately was never uh adopted, but it pointed out something very unique to me that um the seven pond system that we have here uh in Marina is is one of only three places in the world where this exists, here in Marina, Southern Oregon, and South Africa. So it's a very unique system, and Lockpad and Park is part of that vernal system. Um, some of the language in the LCP regarding Lockpad and discusses active recreation. And personally, I'm very much against that designation, and I would request that the planning commission consider addressing that and potentially recommending that that designation be removed. Um, at the time that the two thousand five master plan was done, um, there really weren't a lot of active recreation uh elements within the City of Marina and our parks at the time. And since that time, two thousand five, And since that time, 2005, we've developed a lot of active recreation areas like Gloria Jean Tate Park, the new parks that will come online within Sea Haven and also within the Dunes area. So we have a lot of active recreation elements now that weren't existing at that time. And one of the things about Lockpatten Park is that it was adjacent to a Holiday Inn in development where a lot of things were put into Lockpatten Park, like a mitigation area to help that hotel be built. And some of that bled into active recreation elements that would support that development, like tennis courts. And there was a bunch of stuff in there that I don't really think is relevant now. And so I would suggest that let's leave that very unique coastal vernal wetlands pond system as it was supposed to be, as the Coastal Conservancy imagined it to be. And I think as a lot of people residents within Marina really want that park to stay, which is a very unique, you know, pond system that we have here and walk around it and not have a lot of active recreational elements within it. So thank you for that.
Thank you much, Jeff. Next up is Daniel.
Hello. Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, yeah, this is Daniel Derconia and I'm an owner of the Marina Landing project. I, I'm sure Allison and Guido have told you kind of a lot of the back and forth that has gone on with our desire to make this site a residential site. I don't want to beat the horse dead. But I think, I think it speaks for itself that we really haven't seen any retail demand on the site or hospitality demand on the site. And I don't know if there's any way to discuss this other than a, you know, three minutes discussion by me. I think I've expressed my concern in the past that the market, the free market has spoken. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, you're fine.
The market has spoken and offered us no retail options on the site. We've been marketing it for years and there's been essentially none. And I'm just not sure why the city wants to impose a use that has no economic viability. Right? We can all desire whatever we want to desire on the site. But if no, if there's no retailers that want to locate there, it's sort of a, it's an outcome that will never occur, right? So it's sort of a fiction. And I, you know, I think housing would be very valuable on this site considering how much of a housing crisis the city of Marina and the entire state of California is in, how many more people it could bring. And of course, we, we can allocate a portion of the site for retail, but we need the housing of the remainder of the site to attract the retailers, right? So those are just some comments, but I was hoping this time it could be a little bit more of a discussion because I'll be frank and say that last time we made these comments, I feel like we were just ignored and the decision was just made regardless of what we had to say. And I'd like to ask for there to be follow-up questions that I can reply to rather than make a statement in a vacuum that goes ignore. And also perhaps I can request some clarification on the transitional and supportive housing that is a part of the land use plan and what that entails. And then lastly, is vote being made and cast today or is that at a later date? Those are my other questions. Oh, sorry, one other thing. If we can't get to some sort of discretionary approval or modification, we're going to proceed with a state law known as AB 2011, which allows by right approval of residential projects on commercial sites. It's a little bit more antagonistic and it circumvents the city's ability for discretionary review and input. It's not a route we'd want to go, but absent any cooperation, that's probably the likely to do. We're planning on submitting a pre-application on that within the next couple of weeks, depending on how this, those are all my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Daniel. I'll, I'll come back to it in a minute. I've got your questions written down. We'll come back to it.
Thank you.
On yours, because that actually is, that'll be, I mean, Daniel, overall, I've got them documented. I think that'll, honestly, it's going to be part of the discussion because land use is part of this at Marina Landing. So we will discuss it in more than 30 seconds today.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. Christina. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear?
We can.
Hello, you can. Okay, thank you so much. I want to say I had all intents and purposes to come see you in person. I appreciate all the work that you all do, making your recommendations and your thoughtfulness. Thank you, Allison and staff for such close attention and taking the time to really think about where we're going and how we lead with our coastal development. That being said, I'm here to sort of echo what the last person spoke about. I represented this area, this side of town for a few years. And I drive by the Marina Landing and I have worked with the, and passed on, hey, there should be this or hey, there should be that. And as I see a hotel go up, as I see things that are, you know, we need to figure out what is going to happen with Marina Landing Shopping Center. We unfortunately shot ourselves in the foot by putting a ton of retail on the other side of town. So when we look at the governor's directive, and I am on some committees that we do talk about housing. In fact, I invite you to one, don't care, really.
Oops.
Sorry. Anyways, I am on some committees where we do talk about housing from a regional point of view. So I really would hope that we do not march into something without looking at all possibilities for our parcels in Marina. We have exhausted, Canes has opened up next week in Salinas. Guess what happened? They had an opportunity to come here. We don't have the traffic numbers. I have studied the traffic numbers. I've looked at the traffic patterns. I have counted, I've stood on the corner, believe it or not, during race season and really had hoped for something in that piece of property. So I implore you to really not look at the Marina Landing space as just what it's supposed to be. Because unfortunately, we have put that piece of property in a place that it essentially cannot develop into retail. And who's doing retail? That being said, I think there should be some special considerations. And I will implore you to please not allow this to go to litigation. Please have an open mind. And this is the time to do this, is have your minds open. Think about what we, what we can contribute to the regional needs of Monterey County. So my time is coming close. But I'm here to implore you to really think about the piece of property that is there. I walk it, I see it, I see the trash. I, I, I'm just really hoping for something that would improve the quality of life across the board for our community. So thank you all for what you do. I'm sorry I wasn't there in person.
Thanks, Christina. I, and I pointed comment. Where did that comment in the middle of it come from? Did it come from her side or it come from our side?
That was from another speaker.
So Christine, I'm going to give you another minute. If you have something else you want to say, because that totally took you out of your train of thought.
You know, it's okay. Thank you. I'm going to reserve it back to maybe someone else who wants to speak. And unfortunately, you know, some things that are happening in our country don't allow us to really think about things in a really open way. So I appreciate what you're doing, your open minds and thinking we have, we're all invested in our community and what's best for it. So let's be creative and let's not be so rigid. And now is the opportunity. So that's all I got to say. Thank you for all of you.
Thanks, Christina. Okay. Next up, Guido, do we have anybody else?
Chair, what said, we have no other speakers online.
Sure, we don't have the guest who would like to speak? Right. All right, since no other guests online, go ahead and close public comment at this point and we'll come back to the commission. I've already raised my first comment. I'll come back to it later. Where would we like to start? I mean, we can start in order. We could talk about the overall plan, talk about specifics, just be random. I think I'd rather kind of start in the general plan and then go some of the specifics on Marina Landings and Lake Patton separately. So we got, okay, so we'll go ahead and open it up first. And so we'll talk about first Commissioner Chang and Commissioner Walton also is focus on the general plan and any comments on that. And then reserve anything on Lake Patton and Marina Landing and we'll come back and address those two areas separately for comments. Because I think we all, a number of us have different comments. I know there are public comments on both of those also. Anybody would like to speak first?
As always, I'd be happy to.
Commissioner Jacobson.
I, I, I found this document over, overloading. I mean, it's like a, a lot of words, a lot of time. But I did pick out a couple of things that I did want to discuss. One is, is that right off the bat, throughout the document, we talk about maximizing coastal access. And I'm assuming that means all the way down to where the water meets the sand. And in today's world with the ADA, is that how do we get somebody in a wheelchair or somebody that's disabled from the parking lot or from, you know, Lake Court to the shoreline?
That, that is pretty much the number one comment and discussion topic that we've encountered through this whole process. A couple of things to consider. The, the access to the actual shoreline is through several, mostly public, but in one private property as we discussed. So the ownership, State Parks and Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District, it's up to them to actually put the bill for developing those access pathways. The city of Marina is working in concert, actually with EMC is helping the city on a totally separate but related access grant project through Fort Ord Beach, Fort Ord Dune State Park parking lot out on 8th Street, which is outside city limits. But because it's an important, this is such an important topic to the city of Marina, we're working with partners to try to better improve that access. In the planning world, we're very wary of using the term ADA because it's, it brings up certain liabilities and things that sometimes cannot be accommodated. When there's a physical barrier like this. And the, the coastal, the conditions, the wind happening at all times, that's immediately burying improvements that the state parks put out there. That they have built, there are several boardwalks that exist under the sand right now because the wind and just regular climate actions are annihilating, you know, those trails super quickly. So there are a couple of tools. I know Asilomar State Park has those wheelchairs with the big inflatable tires. That could be an option if State Parks Marina State Beach wanted to pursue that. But even those, the slope is.
Who's going to push those up that?
Exactly. The slope is, you know.
I don't know. I see a ski lift in our future. I don't know.
Yeah, so, but this is, this literally is the number one topic for sure. The topography, as we all know, is just.
But what, but what I'm hearing is, is that even though we say this in the document that we're going to maximize that, it's actually not our responsibility at State Parks.
It is not our responsibility. It is other agencies' responsibility. What these policies are doing is, for example, when State Parks comes in and let's say they need to ask the city of Marina for a CDP to build some kind of trail or access, our policies are already in place to support that.
Okay.
That's, that's what this whole thing is intended to do.
That, that, that makes more sense. And thank you. My next question is around, I don't know why I was confused about this and maybe the chair can help me. Dogs are allowed on the beach. Dogs are not allowed on the beach because everything in here says they're allowed on the beach if they're leashed.
In our, that's the standard policy and it was a standard policy on the peninsula across the board until the last few years.
Yeah.
When a couple of communities started to have problems with owners, not the dogs. And as a result, a number of the communities have started to ratchet that down. But right now, I believe that's, that's kind of the ruling state policy.
Yeah, there are, there are unfortunately different rules for different land ownerships. This is State, State Parks and Monterey Regional Park District. Beach frontage allows, State Beach does not allow any dogs, I believe, but I think NPRPD allows on leash, I believe. However, Sanctuary Beach Resort has like, I don't think any restriction.
Right.
So obviously dogs are running amok. I, I actually think that the last time I was here, we did that design review for Sanctuary Beach Resort for signs. And I think they, we did have them install.
We had them put signs.
Leash, leash requirements. So that's another tough one because the, the rules basically on every single parcel are different.
So you can step in one area and you're okay and the other you're in violation?
Yeah, and things, things over time change. I think the chair might be referring to Plover listing, you know, it used, before the snowy plover was listed, nobody cared and their dogs went out and messed with nests. And now that's a big restriction.
All right, so I'm still, so where can we have dogs on a leash?
I would have to verify, but I think NPRPD, do you know? They're on the Marina Preserve.
I'm not familiar with that acronym.
At the very, that's the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District. So at the very north end of Dunes Drive, that's where their public access property is. I believe you can have dogs on leash there. But there are signs, so.
I mean, there's clearly signs at our beach that say no dogs.
Yeah, Marina State Beach, yeah.
Okay, so this was confusing. So I don't know whether that needs to be cleaned up or it's.
Okay.
Okay that way, but it certainly brought that to my mind that dogs on leash, no dogs, so.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you. On the visitor, kind of the commercial land use kind of a thing, talks about visitors serving commercial land and also restaurants, retail, other visitor services. Where could that happen? And within, yeah.
Yeah, so we already have visitors serving commercial on Dunes Drive.
Correct.
So that's, that's the only place it's existing.
And those are hotels and.
Restaurants.
And restaurants.
Yeah, the little campground there. And we're not proposing any change.
Okay, so we're not going to put up a kite shop or?
I mean, if somebody, if, if there was a visitor serving business who wanted to go into one of those places, they would be allowed to because that would meet the zoning.
Into one of the places that exists.
Yeah.
But not on the other side of the street where the sanctuary is.
Only within, can, Guido, can you put up the slideshow?
Matt checked.
The Sanctuary Beach Resort is also zoned visitor serving, but that, that is all one big private property. So.
Right.
It would have to, they'd have to like lease space or something from.
So they have the property all the way to the road?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That's what I was worried about. I could see all these little shops like in Santa Cruz popping up.
Yeah.
Not going to happen?
I don't think that would be happening.
Okay. I think, let me see now. Oh, on some of these surveys where the majority disagree, what, how did that impact any of this? Because that actually surprised me when I saw some that said, oh, I disagree. And that was the majority.
All we need to know are questions.
So we did have the policy framework survey and then a follow-up workshop. And we did revise the policies based on the feedback received. And some of the like policy frameworks didn't make it into the draft based on.
That feedback?
Feedback, yeah.
Okay.
And the active and passive definitions came out of that feedback as well that we needed to clarify what types of uses are allowed and. what types of uses are allowed and, you know, what is recreational uses or what are they? Yeah.
Good, good. Thank you. I, I can often see those people negative. Well, what do they know?
Well, and I will just add to that, that sometimes we still need to leave a policy if it's required by the coastal act, even if people don't like it.
That's, that's, yeah, that's, I think that's where I was going.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Um, let me see. Oh, the recreational facilities that will be allowed around Lock Patton Park. I think it's, you've, you've cleared that up now with the what we're active and the
We're gonna come back.
And the other, oh, that's right. That's, we're coming back.
Let's come back to that.
Disregard that question. Back to you, Chair.
We'll come back. Cause that's a, I think a big, a bigger question that we want to address.
Yeah.
All right. Um, did you get all the answers you wanted for now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, all right. Commissioner St. John.
Thank you, Chair. I only have a few. And I'll start off with the easiest one. On page six, six point three. Uh, urban growth boundary. The second paragraph, it starts within the coastal zone. The farmer scenic site now referred to as Ask the North Dunes. I think it's as, right? We wouldn't call it Ask the North Dunes.
That's a typo. Yeah.
Ask the North.
Correct.
Okay. The end of that one. Easy.
Do that just to make sure that you know we're reading it.
I've been editing all my life. Okay. On, I'm a little confused on paragraph six point three. Uh, policy general L U D two. L U D two. It talks about new residential commercial or industrial developments. And it says in the middle that the city shall design public infrastructure, including water, sewers, stormwater management, et cetera, a whole list of things that whoever needs to make a development, the city will take care of all of this hugely extensive infrastructure. Don't we usually have the developer put in a lot of this infrastructure and then the city takes it over? The maintenance and, uh, and use thereof. I didn't know the city has had so much money.
I, I believe that this is referring to actual city public infrastructure. And all of those things. So these would be things that the city is, you know, on behalf of the city in general, not, not necessarily relating to an individual project or development.
Maybe we need to take a little more dig a little deeper on the wording because it could be, could, could be contentious when somebody develops something and says, oh, where is my water connection or whatever? And maybe that they're right, but anyway, just take another look.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. On page six eleven, six dash eleven. See the city. A potential long-term goal for this area is to repurpose the city's corporation yard as state parks, state parks, housing or other supportive use and to convert the residential uses to recreational facilities. Is this the four or five houses that are currently there? That's the residential uses?
Yes, this, that is referring to Lake Court. Um, that whole area on the east side of Lake Court is currently planned in zone public facilities. So those existing four residences are legal non-conforming.
And is it the city's intent with this paragraph to convert those u- units to recreational facility to condemn them as a home?
Not actively. The city is not planning on actively doing that. However, over time, if say State Parks comes in and wants to purchase those properties from those individual owners to create their corp yard over there, for example. Um, like move that, move the facility that's currently on Reservation Road, very close to the uh, Marina State Beach. Eventually they're going to need to move that. Um, so we have had very high level discussions with them about future purchase of our, the city's corp yard and those houses someday. Um, these policies would just again, like I was describing to Commissioner Jacobson, would lay the framework for that to occur. Um, keeping in mind that there's currently no public water or sewer available to those houses.
Yeah, I understand that. Well, aware of that. Uh, would the would the actual process be something akin to eminent domain?
That would be one tool available. Not the, not the only tool.
Okay. All right. Okay. Now, the, the next couple of paragraphs, I was just, I just put a big question mark on what were the plans for it, but I guess that's getting too deep into the woods. Let me see, I'm almost finished. I was a little taken aback on seven point one. This is a scenic and visual resources. Then the, the, the first paragraph, it's the, for instance, the coastal dunes high rise high on the west side of Highway one, virtually eliminating the view of the ocean in some areas. I agree in some areas, if we drive towards San City or Monterey Peninsula, we, the dunes let us see through. But in the section of Marina, it's, there are, are, I, I can't remember one that lets me from Highway one see through the dunes. There, maybe if we're in a triple decker bus or a low-flying kite, we could see through the dunes, but you can't see through the dunes.
So are you suggesting to remove the word virtually? Cause that sentence is saying exactly what you're saying.
Well, eliminate. It's just eliminating the view in some areas. Well, in some areas along all of Highway one, but in all areas of Marina.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a little misleading that there's only some areas that you can't see the water.
Got it.
I wish there were more areas, but anyway, that's all I got.
Sorry, Todd. Commissioner Walton.
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna be I'm glad. I don't, I don't think you guys could hear me anyway. I'm too loud. Um, I, I just really wanna, um, A, I want to give a shout out, um, and some appreciation to the members of the public who, um, participated in the surveys and the studies and the um, uh, field trips, um, the, I, your feedback and, um, suggestions. I, I just want to say thank you so very much, the public for, for that hand and, and helping, uh, guide the staff and the consultants and uh, giving us something that, um, the cit- the citizens of Marina want. So that was that part. And then, um, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, the, the dunes out there in the event of a tsunami, can somebody just one of the staff just, just walk us through the importance of those dunes, even though we can't see through the ocean for them? And, and I'll end there.
Sure. Yeah. Thanks, Commissioner Walton. The in there, the coastal hazards and sea level rise amendment actually goes into great detail on uh, tsunami hazards and the effect of the dunes. Um, because of the height of the dunes, there's really only the Reservation Road little slot that goes through there. And then under the freeway is the only, uh, potential overtopping area that could pose some hazard for, in the event of a tsunami. But, uh, Commissioner Walton, I definitely recommend that you dive into the, uh, the technical studies for the, uh, hazards amendment, if you're interested in learning more about that.
I, I did. I just wanted to highlight some of it through your, um, um, expertise and show it off. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Chang next, I, I do want to correct that because I believe now this goes back to it. We, I mean, it was raised before, when we discussed the LCP and that we were not responsible for pass through the street. Underpass, we are now going to be responsible for that. Cause that's now going to come underneath us because coastal.
For coastal planning purposes.
Planning purposes. We'll now, we'll now have a second, we'll now have a second route that comes in because when we, we discussed it during the draft review, knowing that it wasn't there, but there was something that could impact the city, even though it wasn't in city responsibility.
Yes.
It's now going to be in city responsibility.
That's interesting because it would have still been under cities jurisdiction, just not coastal jurisdiction.
Right.
So that is an interesting point.
Um, Mr. Chang. Caught you mid-drink there.
Well, it's, it's a glass of, I mean, a cup of coffee. Uh, anyway, thank you, Chair. The, uh, my question is to, um, Alison's and the consultant is, um, I, I just, a suggestions, it would be very helpful if, um, we could have a side-by-side comparison of the two oh one and two oh five bio and P R policy. So that we can identify the weaker or omitted languages and, uh, and comment on it. And, uh, the second thing I want to mention is the biological resources, um, section three point three on page forty-eight to fifty-five. Um, appreciate if the, um, the consultant could read instead of threaten the, uh, the policy original certified in two thousand and one under the resolution of number two zero zero one dash one one eight. Just to ensure that there's clear and enforceable protection of primary and secondary habitats area including mandatory mitigations ratio and long-term habitat management. Um, if they can, um, you know, get back to two thousand and one languages, appreciate that. And the second thing, the wetland and the Verner Point setback policy bio twelve, page fifty-two. Um, one of the public comments saying that the Verner points, uh, in Patton Law Park um, is something very unique for Marina City and, um, so I suggest amended language to require mandatory hundred foot setback from the edge of all wetland and Verner points. Eliminating the discriminations, uh, in great language such as most development shell. That means delete the most development, just go straight to shell. And, um, and making more mandatory hundred foot setback. Um, the next one is the, uh, recreation near sensitive habitats policy, P R thirty-three, P R thirty-four and B I O twenty and page thirty-eight, forty and fifty-four. And clarify that only passive recreations uses such as nature trail, bird watching and education activities are permitted within. And, um, especially the, uh, Lock Patton Park and the coastal Verner Points complex. And the next one is, um, I like to add a provision established a no net loss of environment sensitive habitats area or threatened species policy to ensure mitigation occur locally within Marina Coastal Zone. No net loss policy. I, I like that to be added. And, uh, and also the, uh, draft two thousand twenty-five L U P and L C P, um, is consistent with the twenty forty-five general plan. And just need to confirm that. That's all I have to say, Chair.
Commissioner Chang. Thank you. I don't think there are any open items that he had on that list.
Uh, I could answer his last one about consistency with the general plan. Land use policies are only in the LCP. So the general plan, although we talked about a particular property multiple times and many public venues associated with the general plan, um, the final designation for land use and zoning comes through the LCP. So as far as land use goes, um, and specific coastal policies, they're, they're not required to be consistent with the general plan. Obviously we want them to generally be consistent, but there are a lot of things that are in a general plan that do not exist in an LCP and are not required to exist in the LCP through the coastal act. So in cases where if you want safety policies like police and fire safety, those are not in the LCP. So a city would rely on their general plan's safety element. For example, for policies having to do with safety. Uh, I think, uh, we took notes and heard, um, Commissioner Chang's other comments. Several of the items will be fleshed out further in the implementation plan when that comes forward, like, uh, mitigation ratios and things like that.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Right. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Alison.
Um, Commissioner Rana.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. Uh, my first question is to the consultants. Um, the coastal area, local coastal area is an important and very valuable asset for the city. So while preparing this, uh, update, how much input we receive from the local commercial entities and also some professional entity to achieve the overarching goals, two goals that have been listed. Access and conservation. Inputs from a professional that how city can maximize this asset while meeting these two goals. Because I see the inputs from community, local community, yes, it has been highlighted, but the commercial aspect of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Rana for that, uh, question. Um, as you noted, there is, uh, some, uh, visitor serving commercial and general commercial properties, not a lot within the coastal zone. And we did have, um, various, uh, as we mentioned, questionnaires that were distributed to all property owners, including these ones here. They're on the website as well. And then we also did have specific, uh, stakeholder meetings, but with the larger property owners and organizations. Property owners and organizations there, mainly the um parks districts and the the state parks um and the um. Uh Marina Coast Water District. And Sanctuary Beach Resort, which is a bit of a commercial owner there. Um. So we tried to have various uh ways of of out outreach to these uh. Property owners as well as a larger, broader access to workshops and questionnaires. And again, there's forums like this, the Planning Commission, where we're listening, we're we're seeing the written comment come in. Listening to the comments uh come in and we'll be listening closely to the Planning Commission discussion. Um and then in terms of um input on uh professional input on access and it was access and recreation. Yeah, so um like Esme was saying, the one of the primary tenants of the Coastal Act is coastal access. So um Esme and I are steeped in that that particular um aspect of it. And we work with Coastal Commission staff all the time, who are very pointed in their direction on access, not only in policies, but also coastal development permits. Um so I would consider we, you know, are very knowledgeable on that um aspect of it. But again, that is also why we go out to the individual community members and have different types of outreach to listen to the community as well. As to what are the issues with access. Um and as um Allison brought up and one of your commissioners brought up. Um we what we heard loud and clear is that it can be difficult to actually get to the the coast. It's not as some cities have a ownership access, like if it's all private property, it's it's very much difficult to get to the coast. Fortunately, in Marina, you have it in a lot of like uh state parks or the regional parks. So the property ownership isn't necessarily a an issue, but it's the topography. And we did hear that frequently from um many of the residents here. So again, um we have policies in there for the city to work closely with those property owners to try to facilitate projects. Uh that could garner more access. But again, the dunes are, you know, a unique feature. Um but it does make it difficult to to get to the the ocean there. Um so I hope that that answered some of your questions.
It does. Um still, the part of it remains that uh. How is the city optimizing this resource? For city, city purpose for the residents of city. That maybe using this resource as a income generation source or something like that.
Are you referring to like a tourism campaign or those kind of?
Developing infrastructure in such a way that people get attracted and they want to come and spend time and money here.
Yeah, the the goal of this document is to lay the groundwork for. Hopefully, private developers to come in and spend their money developing things. Um. The city has limited rights in terms of developing access since we don't own. Land along the coast, so we we can't, you know, if we owned one of those properties, we could. Build some fantastic access pathway, but we don't, so we we can't, we're not in control of that.
Okay. And the the next question is, uh there's a lot of discussion on affordability and low cost facilities for the visitors. So whatever commercial activity goes on, it is private. And they do it for profit. So how does, how do we ensure affordability and the low cost facilities, whatever we provide? Does the city subsidize certain facilities?
The city would not be subsidizing and that again will come out in much more detail in the implementation plan. This is this is laying the groundwork for um. Creating that pathway for low cost visitor serving accommodations. This is a major topic for the Coastal Commission. Um for example, the way it will roll out eventually through the implementation plan is. If someone wants to come in and build a new hotel or motel in the coastal zone. They will be required through their coastal development permit to. Come up with some mechanism that dedicates a certain percentage of their rooms to certain income levels.
And then there is some discussion on uh wetlands, wetland development.
Yes, Mr. Baron. How did you everybody today?
Thank you. Um. There is um sewage treatment facility along the green path. Uh sorry, this light blue path. It's still in the hand of Marina and people that try to enjoy walking along that path. Are subjected to very, very false men.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the and it's every day, it doesn't matter the weather, the wind, the direction. So Marina does not on the land is coastal land mission or something, it's not Marina's. But there's never people that go to the beach. Is there any way that Marina can require the county, I think it's county. To find solution for this really big false man that is there all the time?
Um not as part of this coastal land use plan discussion we're having, but yes, the city, I'm sure, does have. Frequent conversations with, I'm not sure if that's Monterey One Water Facility or Marina Coast. Uh Water District.
It's not Marina.
Well, it's it's one or the other. It's either Marina Coast Water District, which is a separate service district, not City of Marina, but or M one water. So we'll bring that up. To. A different path, not quite connected to what we're talking about right now.
Um the other thing is um. The resort, the few parking, public parking spots in the resort. Um so that it's mentioned in the, it's it's one access point to the beach. It's it's a kind of a very well kept secret. I don't think anybody knows about it and. But actually, my concern is if it becomes too well known, then the result will be inundated. With uh with with weekend visitors, especially when um the parking lot gets filled up. So is there any way to control this? Um the park that those few parking spot, maybe ten parking spots there or fifteen. Will get filled up very quickly on those busy weekends when there's nice weather. Um and once it becomes well known. It will be very busy there. So is there any plan how to control the traffic or anything like that over there?
No.
All right.
Those spaces are controlled under the coastal development permit that was issued by the Coastal Commission in the mid nineties.
Okay.
So.
But it's still considered the access point to the beach for Marina?
Correct.
Okay.
For the general public, yeah.
All right.
All right, thanks. All right, I think we've gone through most of the questions except for me. So I I guess a couple that are driving this, which will lead into the next kind of section we're going to talk about. Which I think you made a key point about the L U P. Which is, this is about setting policies that are protective of our coast and our environment down the road. But at the same time, how do we spur development and continue it in a responsible way? And that is a huge balancing act that. Sometimes we've we've not been good at in the city, sometimes I think we've done very well at. Um. I think that kind of said, I um. As we move forward with this and kind of get into the rest of the discussions, Guido, um I separated this off for in three sections for a reason. Um but at the same time, we still have to vote. The way this is set up, we're we are making a motion tonight. That moves forward with the entire LC, L U P. As it is written right now with potentially some additional staff actions that can be attached to it. Um. If we don't have an agreement on certain areas of this, Guido, what becomes the effect if we come up with. Potential staff actions that are significant? Can we separate, can we separate this off? Can we separate parts of this off? It's it's law for one.
I mean, it's, I I would say that you should adopt the recommended motion and then if there are parts that you. Can't get consensus on, then, you know, we would just note that in the motion to the the council, but.
Okay.
I mean, the the key motion is identified on the slide and then the three individual. Questions that are being asked, those could be separate. Sub-motions or however we want to do it, so but we would, we would want to be able to provide some. Feedback to the council about those sub-issues.
Absolutely.
Within the larger, within the larger motion, so.
I I wanted to do that to help to understand how that drive the conversation. Um. All right, um. I don't, I I think most of the comments generally on the L C, on the L U P. Have been discussed overall and I have small grammatical things, but nothing that are really contentious, because we presented this multiple times. Um. That being said, I think one of the areas that I do have a question about is um. When we're trying to, but. I guess it's going back to Commissioner um Jacobson's comment about. The influence of comments on the public comment period where, or or in the planning commission or city council even, where we came up and we had specifically. I think things that went against the initial concept of what we were going at and. Um I think my comment there would be as we move forward with this from a. But publishing perspective is maybe having an FAQ that we have the questions, we have it kind of in the back. But I think his his point was right of it would be nice to have kind of a crosswalk to show, okay, this is what. Really how we're trying to move in a direction. I'm not sure what that would look like. But I I do think going back to selling this, because there are a number of areas within the L U P that are. Will always be contentious and no matter what community you have, there are things that are going to be plus and minus that people agree or disagree. But some type of contextual kind of document at the end is part of the the communications plan. That explains a little more, that just doesn't say we we went through this wave of all these little steps along the way. But what did that mean? And how do we, how do we explain that? Because this has been a year and a half process with. Ten, twelve different meetings between the community and the different groups and. It's hard for some people to, even me, I mean, as I can look at this and think of all the different things that were raised here. How do we bring that all back together so everybody can understand, okay, this is where we started and this is where we're at right now. When I look at some of the letters that were and comments that were provided, I think that's one of the underlying themes that I see in that is. Okay, how did we start with plans that we've had? And the as is conditioned that two thousand five, two thousand one, all the original documents that are twenty plus years old. And how did we get to today and how did we crosswalk that? And sometimes in the comments, we, it is there. If you really read into it and spend a lot of time on it, but a lot of times people can't do that and they don't have the time to do it. And so maybe kind of in the preface to that section, give them a little more context. On that, I mean, I think we might kind of generic come uh comment. Um, okay, moving on to the other areas, I think the two specific areas we wanted to address were. Um. Wetlands and Vernal Ponds, I'll kind of put that into one kind of grouping area. And then we'll come back and deal with the land use side. Um and I think. I want to start with Marina um landing. So I'm going to start with that side of it and. Um. So I'll start with my comment on that, that. This is a somewhat intractable conversation that we've had for a while. That's come back before the planning commission, it's come to the council, it's. Bottom line is we have a set of development that's sitting out there that sits in our coastal development area, which makes it a little bit unique compared to other property. That we have in the community, because otherwise this wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't be put into here. Um so that's what brings it into this plan. Um, that being said, um. On the surface, I. Am hesitant to make significant changes. I think the the interesting part, that one of the comments that came from. One of the developers, owners of the property was the definition of what is acceptable commercial land. Um millinery, by the way, is women's hat stores. But. I don't think, I'm not sure exactly where that is, but I think going back to the wording, and this is where I, some of the discount I didn't understand from the letter. Um that I want some clarification on was that he he cited in the letter specific comments about, okay, this is the list. List A, here's all the commercial development. But then list B, which is what we currently, I thought was what was written in the plan, the way I read it, is everything that was shown up actually on the slide tonight. Said this is what all the development is, this is what commercial is development and it's. And it was much more generic, modern day, didn't go into millinery, it didn't go into terms, it was all retail stores and bookstore. I mean, it was it was a much more modern list, so I didn't quite understand that where that initial one came from. So that's my first question.
And can I answer it?
Yes.
Yes, uh this has been an ongoing discussion. Um the owner refers to the existing allowed uses in our nineteen eighty two plan over and over again. And. Does not refer to all of this much more modern list of allowed uses that we are actually proposing in the current land use plan.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that when I read it, I was reading a plan that was some forty years ago.
You. Correct.
Uh, okay. Are we talking about the Marina Marina Landing Site? Because I I disagree with Allison's.
So. So we we are and ultimately, this is not public comment time right now. We had public comment before and so this is the commission talking now.
That's fine. Is is there an opportunity?
So the answer is, yes, there is an opportunity to actually, when I have order and I provide the opportunity at the very beginning, provide the public comment. Leading into it and you had a chance to provide that public comment to it. And so. If you continue to disagree, that's totally, and anybody disagrees, anything that comes up with the commission, and I would generally, this is a general policy, not pertaining to the specific issue. There are always comments that can come back on the discussions that we have here and you are absolutely and welcome. The planning staff with additional comments that would come in off of our meetings. So I think my question is that last time, when I looked at the current plan and the way it is currently written in L U P. We have a more, I guess, modern definition.
That is correct.
When it gets adopted. The new paragraph, not bulletin language, paragraph language. That's written there is what is going to be written underneath wherever it is.
Is there an opportunity to verbally comment during this meeting?
Daniel, uh this is Guido, I'm the staff running this meeting along with the chair. This is not public comment time. Um so I'd ask that you refrain from interrupting the commission. We've had our public comment period. And at the end of the commission's deliberation, it's completely at the discretion of the chair. With the will of the commission, if he wants to request additional input, but at this time, I would respectfully ask that you stop interrupting the commission. Thank you.
Mom always said, count to ten. All right, so that was my first question. Um so my second one, the kind of getting into this is. Um and it really is kind of the bigger one. It does tie back to the conversation you were just having about the general plan and that. Our land use plan and our zoning plans, in this case, our regular zoning. Combined with our general plan and then lumping on top of this, in this specific case, because we're in the coastal zone, our L U P. That even though it is best practice to try to synchronize these, because they come out of different published dates. We cannot always synchronize these with the current guidance that is out there, especially with the ever changing guidances coming down from the state when it comes to development. Uh especially development as residential, residential, commercial or mixed use. Uh so that said, when I read through this, the way I understand that this is written right now is that. The recommendation at this point is to basically remove the L U P. From the decision-making loop of how to decide where we want to go and we're going to fall back on other guidance. So right now, we have the guidance written in here, we have the recommendation for the development, which is to leave it where previous discussion has been. Which is on residential, because it's been raised at general finding meetings, it's been raised in public hearings, there is a body of precedent. In our discussions over the last eighteen months of this is where we want to go. We can change that in the L U P and we we can request staff action that would override those conversations. We can change that in the L U P and we, we can request staff action that would override those conversations. However, if we are going towards best management practices, and this is what I'm, the way I'm viewing this right now, from a best management practice, if we want to synchronize this, we don't want to have three different bodies of work saying three different things. And we would, it would be better to, a, a method that we could discuss here would be to leave this as it is and which would allow this, the discussion there to default back to other documents and other places that are, are more, that are also pertinent.
If, if I'm understanding you correctly, the decision on what the land use designation for this property is going to be is the land use plan for the L C P. It is not the general plan.
Right, so the main one should be made here.
Correct.
Okay, that's why I need to know. So this is the overall, this becomes the primary guidance document.
Yes.
That we should, that we should base our decisions on both.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I have some other comments, but I'm going to save that for coming back after the other commissioners. So we'll start on the left, we'll start going around the circle again. Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chair. A couple of things. The recreational facilities that are talked about relative to Lock and Park. What, what is that? What is that? What could that look like? What would be allowable, I guess, is my question.
Are, uh, under the definitions for?
I, I saw the definitions. What does it actually look like? You what, what would, what could go there? Do we have a hot dog stand there?
You probably could have a hot dog stand there.
Okay. Yeah, well, it is if you've got kids in the park and you.
Yeah, I mean, the, the notion of a hot dog stand in the little parking lot
Yeah.
there by the restroom would not be inconceivable, I would say.
But you don't see any facilities being erected around Lockpatten.
Unless they could fit into the like nature observing bird blind or, you know, things like that, that would fall into the category of either active or passive recreation.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's really protected, that we've got it locked down, that there, nobody can create something there that would detract from its purpose.
That, that is the big question of the commission, exactly. Like, do you agree with how we've defined things? Because this is what's going to move on to the council. You know, interpretive centers do fall under our passive recreation definition, the way we've presented it to you. So that's a building. But it's specifically for
Supporting the
Supporting the, right, right.
Alright, and um, let's, let's now, if I can, can I jump back to the land use of that parcel?
Yeah, because that's where we're at.
Yeah. I don't see why we would hold back the development of that parcel. Because we have some policy that says this is what's supposed to go there. It's not the first time that I've heard from planning people that that parcel is really not suitable for commercial development for a number of reasons. One is it's, it's not in sight, nobody can see it. Two is traffic, nobody goes by there. And so if there is an opportunity to turn that into some kind of a mixed use environment, AKA the promenade or something like that. If there was an opportunity to create some what, what do we call it? Middle, middle of the road housing there or, or, what do we call that?
You forgot. Missing middle.
Missing middle.
Missing middle, that's it, missing middle housing there. I, I think that would just make sense. I'm, I'm a little confused about this whole discussion about this parcel. If it can't be developed like it was intended, then let's abandon that plan. I certainly don't want to see that big damn open space anymore. End of my comments, sir.
Mr. Chang, you're up. I guess I need to turn my mic. Now he can hear me.
Okay, thank you, Chair. It was, I don't know, all of a sudden it was mute. I, I'd like to bring back to my comments again on the hundred foot setback policy. Uh, I'd like to hear from the consultant, why do they change the mandatory setback to most development shall be the phrase? Is there a reason for changing that?
Um, yeah, good question. So there is a coastal act section, section three oh two, three, three that specifically does allow some development in wetlands. And um, I won't read the whole section, it's pretty long, but that includes restoration, nature study, dredging if required for whatever reason. So the language that outright prohibits any development within the hundred foot buffer of a wetland would also prohibit restoration activities. So that language was aligning with the coastal act. And in addition, we realized that some of the residential parcels on Mimi Court and Robin Drive are within the one hundred foot buffer. And there, those single family homes are developed within that one hundred foot buffer right now. So that would, that language would prohibit remodels to those homes or ADUs. So the language is not to just allow development around wetlands. It's, the intent is still to be protective of the wetlands, um, but you know, allow redevelopment of existing single family homes, ADUs, um, that are across the street already from the wetland. And then the, the coastal act allowed development such as restoration. And yeah, so that was coastal act section three oh two, three, three, if you want to see what the coastal act does allow.
Well, if there are houses that have been done, could we just still have the mandatory setback of for future developments so that no other development would come in within hundred feet?
We could propose that in this document, but when it goes to the coastal commission for their review and certification, they would likely modify that language as, as May just described.
To remove or, or allow it?
To allow the
Existing.
Well, to allow uses that are allowed under three, two, three oh two, three, three.
And I think I've gotten a building on to his minds. I think mine goes back to riparian boundaries, I think are a great thing. And we need to have that development and there is, Robin Avenue is a great example of where, where it can be beneficial and have negative consequences at the same time. You have no curb line. And so you have boundary and you have cars that can park on that side of the street, which then can lead to runoff and lead to other issues. If we allow, if we put ADUs in or we allow development and, and growth on those streets of residential, we could increase those consequences. At the same time, the boundary and the coastal commission, I mean, it's allowable. And do we, and do we want to restrict our thirty residents, forty residents total that are impacted by this in certain areas? From being able to put an A D U or being able to develop their house, just because they happen to live there and the policies have changed over the last fifteen or twenty years or five years that they've lived there. Uh, it's a very kind of intractable issue, I think, that Commissioner Chang, you're raising, that is difficult, because it's really easy to make a decision on that, to say no. But it has a direct effect on some of our residents. It is not equitable. You're right. So that said, that I think is one of my questions that I have, kind of, if I can build on to his. I don't see any of the other commissioners raising their hand at this point. Oh, you have, sorry. Is.
Chair, I have a second point to raise. Can I?
Yeah, go ahead and finish yours.
Alright. Uh, would a consultant consider the inclusion of a no net loss of E S H A or threatened species standard as part of the citywide conservation framework? No net loss policy?
Um, I, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So, um, yeah, we did, we spoke with our biologist about this issue. And um, I'd like to hear the rest of the planning commission's consideration on that. That's certainly something that can be considered to put into the, um, the plan. Sometimes there's an issue if um, you know, mitigation has to happen. Is there enough mitigation area available within the city boundary? So I think that's what you're getting at, that any and all mitigation should happen within the city. So just the question comes up, what if there isn't any left? Or what if it's already, um, the available land for mitigation's already been spoken for? What, what do you do in that, in that case? So is there a, a fund that could be put into to help maintain, you know, things, other biological resources or environmentally sensitive habitat areas within the city? Or can it be broadened out to have, include adjacent jurisdictions as well? One example was brought up that, um, you know, someone wanted to, a developer wanted to have a mitigation bank up in Humboldt County, for example, which is, you know, which does seem extreme to me. Um, but yeah, that, that is something that we consider, but the biologist did suggest, uh, having some kind of exception i- if you were, the city were to run into that issue where there is no additional land um, in the future that's available for mitigation. So that's, that's the main consideration.
Well, it's just my opinion personally, and that's right, the city, go back to the city planning again, and we need to identify the, uh, the city, uh, brand and, um, identity and when, when we turn to work on this city planning and, uh, so that we know what we want the city to be like. And just like the, uh, the north, uh, West, uh, Highway one. I do not know what is the, uh, the long-term plan for the, uh, C M A C side, you know, from the city point of view. Maybe Alison, you could, um, explain to me on that.
Sure, thank you. Um, the, the long-term plan is that as a result of the cease and desist order for the, the former sand mine, uh, that whole property is to be restored and conveyed to a public or nonprofit agency that would continue a natural restored area that would include public access. So it, it's not necessarily going to be owned by the city of Marina, but it could be, um, conveyed to Marine, um, Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District, for example. Um, it's adjacent already to their existing land there at the north end of Dunes Drive. That would be logical. It could be conveyed to a local land trust. But it is intended to stay in, be restored to and then stay in a, um, you know, a natural type of environment that would allow public coastal access. Just Commissioner Chang, going back to your comments about uh, no net loss. And Anastasia went into some detail on this, but you cannot mitigate E S H A impacts where there's already E S H A. So, um, that's, that goes to the city of Marina's particular uh, challenge in this regard is you saw on the, the biological resources map, like the whole entire city almost is some kind of E S H A already. So if we're trying to mandate this no net loss policy, where, where will the people do their mitigation? It, it is very difficult. And this is a difficult, um, process all up and down the state of California. It's not just Marina, but we do have extra challenges.
Thank you, Alison, for the clarifications. I really appreciate it. Because I think community would like to know that too. Alright, thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thanks, Commissioner Chang. So I want to, I guess, kind of pick up and go back to where I was, going back to Messenger and, and Robin Drive. I think that we've got that area and then we've got Lake Patton, we've got active and passive. Our kind of re, kind of discussion points that we've talked about that these circle around. And I think they're very different issues within our plan, especially Lake Patton versus the ponds of Robert Robin. And I think even looking that the challenge that I have with, that I'm trying to put through my head is that there are different issues. There are, I mean, literally, I think it's, there's probably forty, thirty-five, forty houses between Messenger that backs up, their backyards back up onto the, the ponds. And then on the other side of the street, you have Robin, where there's no curb line, but cars park on there. And so it's a different problem. If you're on Robin, it's, it's a parking oil runoff discharge on issue. If it's off, if it's a house that's off a messenger, or then it's really, or I guess Lake Drive, some houses on Lake Drive two. Then what you're talking about are, there, it's literally, this is their property that they own. And if we don't allow them to put an A D U in onto their property or a J A D U, then we're impacting that ability. And just because they lived on one side of this, it's literally, you can live on one side of the street, you're okay, and you go on the other side, you don't. And that's so, this is why I'm, I know that there are a number of comments that came to this issue, we don't want any development to a hundred feet. And that's great if I'm looking at Lake Patton Park by itself. But as soon as I take this policy and I, I scale this policy to all of our, our areas, I can't, I'm having a hard time figuring out what is the right definition here? That protects someplace like a Lake Patton with all of its issues, but at the same time is not taking away the property rights of our owners in the city. And because it's, it's, they have this, and I don't think that any of them, I mean, there are penalties. If I, if we, if I understand, when we've got zoning penalties, that if they violate or they discharge or they do something illegally and they live off of one of those, one of those properties, we have code enforcement currently in place. And that's not very a land use issue, that's an enforcement issue that currently is on the books, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's, and part of the reason, if I understand it right, in the way, our context, and I'm, I'm really trying to think back to when we worked the draft. When, the reason that we didn't set the hundred feet repairing boundary as a absolute was because we have specific, we have issues that are similar, we have some of these issues where we have things like these how, like these homes that are sitting within a hundred feet. And so that's why we're trying to, trying to find a balance between the two, and that's why we sit, hold on, I'm, I got it.
Okay, so listen.
I saw you. You're not even using the light today. You're just like, raise your hand.
Wait.
So, I mean, was that part of the, the intent of, I, I, I don't, I just don't remember what we were talking about when we first started this.
Um, yeah, that was the intent of the most development was to not preclude the, the residential. And Lockpatten again is zoned open space, so it's a little different. You wouldn't be allowed to obviously develop a house within a hundred feet of Lockpatten. So it has its own protections under the land use designation. And I think we could try to wordsmith Bio eighteen. This is the one that says the most development shall be set back a minimum of a hundred feet. We could, I think it's, we tried to write it in a way that, you know, it, the city shall preserve and maintain Marina's wetlands as protect productive wildlife habitats and protect them against significant disruption. So if there was development proposed at Lockpatten Park, say for uh, like a viewing area or a dock. Uh, like a viewing area or a dock, it would have to get a coastal development permit, and the city could. You know, would have the opportunity to have conditions on that to make sure that it's not um, disturbing the productivity of the. The wetland. So I think the intent is to write it in a way that's still protective, but doesn't prohibit those homes, but.
Okay, that's what I thought, and that's, and that's why I think, and the challenge was, we can't, at the same time, we're not going to go out there and say, okay, this only applies to Messenger and Robin. We, that's not the intention, that's not what we do in these documents.
Yeah, I think the coastal zone is actually just Robin and Mimi Court and Messenger is not in the coastal zone. Yep.
Interesting. Interesting. I did not real, I I thought that I, I'm surprised that the very tip of Messenger, the back of Messenger is not. I'm pretty sure the back of. The homes that back up right against it. I think there's, I think there's maybe ten or ten or twelve homes. I it it, it splits that road right there, I think.
We we get.
But you get the point I'm trying to make.
We get where you're going.
I think that's my important thing is, and Mimi Court would, Mimi Court is the exact same situation.
Yeah.
So I would prefer that we could do something like, clean up the wording on that. To make that that clarified, because I do think that that. Again, when you read that without understanding the context, and we have, there is very set context. Now, what I also understand is that if anything came forward to the planning, to. The planning department for development, it would have to go through our regular process, and because that's in a coastal development zone. We, as we've already seen, because we've had issues come before the planning commission in the last year and a half. It would have to go for some type of permitting, even if it's an ADU right now. So until that changes, there's, there is a check and balance on the system with the way the wording is set up. Even though you'd have to understand the context to be able to to attach A and B together, understand that we actually have a protection in place. That covers that wording. Okay, I will turn to you, young Padawan. Mr. Jacobson.
You you've answered my question. Because of the A and B, so if there was any development in that area, it would come before us anyway.
Right.
And so that that takes care of me, as long as they don't get denied at the initial step because of that.
Yeah, I I do want to point out that as we get into the implementation plan, which is the zoning.
Right.
Uh, we are going to be pushing for um, not to put the cart before the horse, but this is a very important statewide issue. We are going to be pushing for an administrative review for ADUs, for example. In the coastal zone, which would apply to the those only properties in our entire coastal zone on Mimi Court and Robin Lane. Um, due to. You know, state mandates about streamlining affordable housing opportunities, et cetera.
I don't think that's a problem, for me at least. I mean, maybe for the other committee, I'll look to other commission to chime in if they disagree with that. But I, to me, it, that's still coming before the plan, it's it's still.
It's going through the review.
Still set of review processes that exist. It's not coming before us, it's just going before you. If it, if it goes above and beyond those standards for administrative review on ADU, then it's going to get escalated and come to the planning commission.
Correct.
So there is a, again, there's still a full check and balance on the system. We may change where the the boundary is on where the ADUs get approved from office level administrative to administrative to finding commission, but it doesn't change the fact.
Correct.
So. Okay, so that was my my first one. Um, other questions from the group? Yes.
Just a couple. Getting back to where Commissioner Jacobson left off on the park, the uh, recreational facilities. I wanted to. Discuss a little bit examples of what wouldn't be allowed and maybe what would be allowed in these. Area that we're we're uh. Formatting the policy for. Things that wouldn't be allowed would be like a pickleball court. That correct? Yes or no?
Those, that would be considered active recreation and would be require a conditional use permit.
Okay, and on what grounds would we deny it?
Uh, if you couldn't like any use permit, if you can't make the findings, then you have to deny it. So it would have the exact same findings as our use permits have now. So, public health and safety, you know, whatever our normal use permit findings are now. It would go through that same process as well as a coastal development permit along with it.
Really have to find on it is that it's environmentally un-unhealthy, the environment.
That is one of your use permit findings.
Okay. Because it wouldn't be unhealthy for the public to play pickleball, it would be encouraged.
That is part of the planning commission's discretionary review.
Oh, okay. How about a BMX track for kids to ride their fancy bicycle?
I think that would fall under active recreation.
Yeah.
Same process.
All right, so, so, all right, so that's, I I know where he's going with this, and I I so. So I think those are kind of more direct ones. Um, I understand where he's coming from, because I have, I have concerns about what that would mean to from conditionally use. Because a lot of times, when things come before us, we do get our hands kind of hamstrung by just the way the the permissions are written. And sometimes we have, by letter of the law, we have to kind of approve things, whether we really necessarily agree or not. Um, because the law says this is what we're at. So I think that that's where it means, one, one aspect of where he's coming from. My issue on active, because we're now looking at definition of active and passive. I know that there is a theory of let's not have anything active, and I know a number of the letters came forward and presented that. The challenge with no active, if I understand it right. Um, basically, when you go to Wetlands, then you go to three oh three, and you go to, um, I guess, three or two point three three the same way. That if we restrict it completely, there is nothing we're going to be able to do. And so that puts almost a, if it put the cap, if I want to do, literally, right now, we have a monitoring program. That goes on at all these. If I put zero active, that actually removes that unless it's driven by environmental safety. Issue.
Yeah, I would say something like monitor, you know, monitoring water quality is probably a low intensity use that could fit under passive.
So. So I'm gonna, I, one that is in between. And that I know actually played out in Seaside. At um. The west side part of La Grande. Site between uh, Del Monte and the highway portion of it. Is that for, when I first moved here, they allowed RC boat racing. Then, for twelve years, they didn't allow it. And this was a big deal, because at that that course, there was actually a national level course that they held like competitions at. And now they actually allow it with permits, I don't know what the restriction is, but I know that they've got some type of restrictions. But the bottom line is they allow it again, at at some level one. So coming back to something like that, which is. I think, I can't argue they would be passive, because it's it's like literally active RC boats, and they're, it's sitting there, but it's low impact. And I think that's why, well, this was a conversation at the CFC side, obviously, that, or I guess my right, they they had. Because they restricted it, they had it, they restricted it, and now they've redone it, and they've removed it, and they've they've allowed it again with conditions. And so you can't just go out there on a Sunday and do it, but they can have certain events X number of times a year, or whatever the requirements are. So I, if, when I come to it and I start looking at this active and passive, to me, it's, how do we? Can we create something that that comes back and and drives people? I mean, we go back to the ide- idealistic kind of world of nineteen fifties, which I think is what a lot of people envision. Lake Patton Park is this open area where we've gotten it dredged out finally. Um, dredging itself is an issue under active and passive. I mean, an absolutely an issue that's gonna come, that comes up. Then, if we go back to that concept, we don't want to have a lot of development, we want to have it opens, really true open space. And so that's one philosophy on this thing. There's just kind of this big open space, open, and you see the lake, you've got all the open area. And then at the same time, I'm thinking, yeah, and then there are kids, or you go to New York, and oh, you've you've got this in. In Central Park, and you have the kids out there with their, or adults with their powerboats or their sailboats, and they're, it's just, it's there. It's a low impact, generally low impact, active definition. Is how do we, what, how do we set the right conditions so that, I don't necessarily think we want to restrict active? Because I think that that goes, there are just a lot of negative consequences that that we're going to have to go against, dredging just being one of them by itself. But at the same time, I don't, like he's talking about, uh, Commissioner um, St. John is discussing. I don't think any of us are saying that we want to have tennis courts or racquetball or pickleball courts there. And so how do we? How do we redefine the definition? So that we can. Control that, that the risk.
Um, I do just want to point out that dredging would be considered development. It's not necessarily a type of active or, it's not a recreational use. So that would be, I think, a separate um, discussion and be subject to a permit. Yeah, several permits. Um, but yeah, I mean, it, this is the discussion that we want to hear, planning commission, about what type, what is. You know, what what do the commissioners think about the, you know, type of recreational uses to happen at Lockpatten Park, you know?
What what I'm thinking of, you know, and I guess I was being a little direct. These things come before the commission, conditional use permits come before the commission. And if they are written properly, and they have proper. Guidance from consultants so that they are written very well, the commission has. Even very few of us have the ability to vote no. Even though we might not like it. And that's happened to this group right here in the last three or four years, two or three times.
Yeah.
Even though we don't, we we can have all the discussion we want, then when it, the rubber meets the road, we vote yes. Because. They have a very solid case, and even staff says it's a very solid case. Because staff is going through the rules, and right now we're writing the rules, and it seems like it's a little weak. I'm gonna have a hard time saying you can't have a pickleball court. Because you get, even though you're a hundred feet from the 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 water.
Right, so what we're asking specifically, the planning commission. A majority at least, if not every single planning commissioner, is to tell us. Um, perhaps there should not be any, that is defined as active recreational out at Lockpatten Park. And it should be only passive recreation, such as a few types of uses that you all agree to. Not trying to come up with the exhaustive list, because we don't like doing that.
Now you're talking.
Right.
Let me, let me ask this. Is there anything there that has to be grandfathered?
Well, everything that's currently there would be grandfathered. It could become legal nonconforming if if the rules were to change, and you know, there was.
How much of it?
So not, not all of Lockpatten Park is proposed or existing open space. The the library parcel, most of it is public facility. And there's a public facility strip on the south side of Seaside Circle. So not the whole entire thing is um, open space.
I will go out on a limb and say, let's not, I would recommend not having active recreation.
And that's exactly what we want to hear from the planning commission. If if your colleagues, a majority agree with some.
But that includes, if we do that, that includes, I mean, it's grandfathered in, even though they're both, or it is in horrendously, I mean, like unsafe condition. That include the viewing, the viewing areas.
Correct.
So any of the the boardwalk and entry areas, that would be considered active.
No, that that would be considered passive. That's all passive. Well, Guido's got it up on the, um, oh, no, he's got the land use.
May I ask you a question?
I, like I said.
Uh, I have, I have a question, this is a general question. Is that all public land? Okay. So under what condition, how does anybody get a permit to use public land for, you know, a retail shop or something?
There would be no, well, that is a good point. So the city could lease or. Lockpatten Park is shared ownership between the regional park district and the city of Marina.
Uh huh.
Which is part of the whole complicating thing. Someone with a hot dog cart, for example, could get a temporary lease or, you know, some kind of license, mobile food vendor license, for example. To set up their little thing. Would the city or NPRPD? Issue a permit for a private developer to build a health club at Lockpatten Park? No.
No.
No. But but this is the conversation that we want you to kind of work out.
So what if.
So we can move on forward.
I'm with the commissioner here, and why don't we just eliminate active entirely?
I just want to try and understand what dominating entails. So I'm, I still.
That makes sense.
Still want to play the, play the what if somewhat.
Might help if I read out the definition of passive recreation, so you can understand what's allowed under that. So, low intensity recreational uses such as walking trails, hiking trails, boardwalks, picnic areas, interpretive signage. Interpretive centers, botanical gardens, community gardens, and nature observation decks. So that is what would be allowed in the open space land use designation, which is Lockpatten Park. And um, the rest of the open space west of Highway one. And to just to clarify, we're just talking about removing active recreation from Lockpatten Park, not from the rest of the open space. Land use designation. Yeah, that's a question.
Yeah, so keep in mind that if you remove active recreation, which you could. But it would apply to all of the light green open space on the map, not just Lockpatten Park, because it's. Those are the uses allowed in the open space land use designation.
Yes.
Chair, can I say something about the Lockpatten Park?
So if.
Commissioner Barron, and then you can, Commissioner Chang.
If we put the the bottom line can be uh, passive recreation. With other activities uh, can be to the discretion of whatever commission. The city or park and recreation can decide, because if somebody wants to organize a small concert or a lecture outdoors. Then they can get a permit and do it. So you give some flexibility, but the bottom line will be no basketball courts, no noisy activities that scare the animals and. Um, or or activities at night that make some noise for nocturnal creatures and so forth. That's can be some kind of flexibility, keep flexibility.
It's so delicate.
No, I mean, I, no, I agree with you. I mean, I think that's. I mean, I think, Alison, you made a good point that that. I think they they saw, and then Commissioner Chang, all of you write comments also. Which is that this is, when we zone something, we're zoning for everything, not just one area.
Right.
And so the the contention point for zoning right now, historically right now, is is Lake Patton. But we're actually creating zoning for, we're actually creating the definition of zoning of re, we are redoing the definition of what open space means.
Yes.
Yeah, and I withdraw my.
Oh, don't withdraw it. I think it, we just have to understand it, and I, that's not, and I think that's the challenge. And you've raised another kind of valid point about it. Um, Commissioner Chang?
Thank you, Chair. I think for the information of fellow commissioner, all the, I'm not sure you all know that there's a. Proposal of Asian garden. Um, being introduced to the, in this Lockpatten Park.
We, yes, through the chair, we, we are aware of the Asian community garden. Um, we're not suggesting we call that particular use out as an individual use. However, it would fall under the botanical gardens. That is one of the listed uses under passive recreation.
Or, or fonder meditation, quiet setting. I mean, it could fit under a couple of definitions, parcels, I think. Something else you wanted to add, Commissioner Chang?
No, I just want the commissioner to know there's something is going on there. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
All right, so I'm at another one, playing my what if game. Uh, what if you wanted to fish?
You'd need a fishing license.
Okay, got that. And then you actually have to have fish in the lake.
I've heard that fishing in the lake may be not such a good idea.
But that is, all right, so everything said. Here's, here, let me, I'll, I'll frame again, we're talking Lake Patton, but this is across the board. It's any open space. And our open space technically goes down to the ocean, even though it doesn't really, because it's, so the reason I bring it up is that, like many other things, even if there aren't fish, people still like to fish with their families or their kids and they'll go out there and even if they catch nothing, it's not about, it's not about the, it's not about catching the fish as much as about the experience. And so, and, and I know this specifically because this came up at the lake at the Naval Coast Graduate School, that for years wasn't stocked and fish. But a lot of people go.
Time out.
You only got the six, you had to get to 10. You have four more in you? Okay, but that's true. There are rabbits, there are squirrels there and there are coyotes, but we're not going to hunt. All right. So hunting is out. I'm going to say that one right now. Hunting is active and hunting's out. Um, but I bring up fishing because I did see it and, and I, and I saw it with families that just wanted to fish in a low environment, low stress environment in a lake. And it was just about going out there. It wasn't about catching anything. And so just from a definition perspective, even if nobody wants to go out there, fishing to me at that point becomes active. Or am I, or am I wrong? Or would that be passive?
I, I personally would call that passive.
Okay.
I mean, if you're on a boat in the ocean fishing for like barracuda or something, that's kind of active, but.
And I guess the, so that said, what I'm now, and I'm, the reason I brought that up is I'm trying to get to a definitional one instead of an example based. Definitionally based, then it's, now we're talking, it's, it's tied to noise, it's tied to activity. It's, there's some set of criteria that we're actually tying it to, that things then would be bracketed into. Where instead of giving an example of an exhaust, exhaustive list, because then what people will come up with is an exhaustive list of things that aren't included.
Correct.
So what we want to do is we want to have a definition of, okay, what are the criteria that define open space?
If, if I might, I think Commissioner Barron was really on a good
No, I agree.
direction, just listing things that are not impactful to nighttime wildlife or, you know, like that would, those kinds of things would be good brackets.
Right.
To get to where you're.
If we start with that, where she's at. And then can we add a noise component to it? Would that be acceptable that we said that it's below seventy, what, seventy decibels?
We, we, we could, I would recommend, since these are policy documents and these are intended to be very high level in general, I would save those kind of things for the implementation plan, because that's when you're getting down into the nitty gritty standards for things and like operational standards. I think um, taking this passive recreation definition that we have right now and finish the sentence with, and other uses not impactful for wildlife or uh, creating noise impacts or, you know.
Okay. And I'm fine with that. And I'm fine with not sending the criteria and just saying noise impacts and whatever. Again, at strategic level, this is what we're doing. I'm okay with that, which then eliminates active, but it expands passive to allow us to incorporate other things that are low risk, low impact to, to the community and to the environment. And I think that, that, I mean, it, it, that gets, that it kind of addresses both a number of the challenges that, that came from comments, I think a number of challenges that we all have with it, which is that, I mean, I have the, the concern that I think Commissioner St. John raised is a valid one. We have had many things that come before us over the years that because our policies, we get, we get pretty good at writing policies that, that can also hang us at the same time. And we don't want to create a new zone, zoning area that ends up creating a problem for us three or four years from now and that we're going to have to address because somebody comes before us with some wild exception.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, we're going to be stuck, you know, in a rock and a hard place.
So I, I believe that we, the three of us have a really good idea of where you're going with this passive recreation definition. And if it's the will of the whole commission to just delete active recreation as the definition of it and as an allowed use under the open space, that would be your recommendation to the council. They might not go along with it, but that's what the commission
I'm fine with that.
Moves forward.
I, I, I'm internally a bit distraught.
Open space from the same hill all the way down.
Commissioner Walton and Commissioner Bang, do you two agree with that, that course of action?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang just staring at me. Now I'm just looking back at him. He's smiling. He's like, I am halfway around the world. All right.
Not calling, I, yeah, I got it. I agree with you.
And the two of you are okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So on, that covers the wetlands, we covered that area. And we've got that. So we've got the main plan covered. We've got the, the wetlands area. And if we still, we started to discuss it, but we didn't finish up on the landing. So let's go back and finish that. And I think that'll be the last thing that we need to finalize. So where we left off was that the landing area right now, we, this is the primary document that will define what the zoning is for there. And the other documents would be nice to be following with it, but this is the primary place to state it. So that's the base is do we want, if this is the base document, do we want this to stay where it sits right now, which is a hundred percent commercial? Or do we want to look at switching to something that is more of a mixed use? Because I don't think it's, it obviously is not going to residential. So it would have to be some type of mixed use. And that would be the recommendation that we're moving towards is to allow them to relook at this and say, we want that. So I think that's the question at hand. So I'm going to go out to the commissioners and I'm just, I just want, I'm just going to go around, I'll start. You have perspective on that? So you, what would you guess what?
I, I'll go for a commercial. I want to bring the issue of the general plan. I was going to say we look at this separately from the general plan. Also key for the general plan advisory committee. And it looks at the whole picture of Marina, not just this park. So we can put it as far separately from the higher plan that we, the general plan advisory can act for. I, I don't think we should put it separately because my midpoint all the other development, I don't think even Marina and the next twenty five years. We should take it out of context. What that means. So I think we should stick to what the general plan.
Commissioner. Commissioner Walton.
I'm going to apologize. I think my, my bandwidth is low or something. The last couple of things, can you even hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. So I, I can recap it. So what?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Barron is, her feeling is that it should be, we should keep with commercial only with the idea that um, the local community is part of the long-term and general plan committee groups, meetings. They looked at this area specifically and as a whole as a city, felt like that's their recommendation coming through the general plan. And that's what the community wants to see in the area. So that's where she is leaning towards is that it should stay commercial only, which is what it is right now. Uh, Commissioner Rana is looking at it and saying, okay, we already have mixed use that we're looking at across the city with the promenade being an example of that. And so he is leaning towards looking at that as, as being a mixed use area and allowing it to change our zoning.
Uh, thank you. Thanks for the recap. And I don't know, you, you're coming in loud and clear with, without any matrix style. EBG, but
Call me, I don't want to be.
Um, I'm leaning toward that mixed use, uh, shopping and housing as well. Um, I think it's a good area for it. I, I, I know that the, the idea of just commercial only, um, but with our arena numbers, I think it would be very helpful. Um, I think it's a good spot for it, especially if the Walmart is going to stay situated where it is. Um, and, and I think that it gives also for a lot of people that um, get on and off the highway because they don't live where they work, um, that access is, is pretty decent. Um, so that's where I stand on it. I, I'm, I'm for the mixed use shopping and housing.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Chang.
He's not moving.
He's frozen. Like it's gone on too long. It's gone three hours. This is a long meeting. Um, it is three hours, sorry. Uh, Commissioner Chang, do you have any input that you wanted to provide to this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't turn on the mic. Yeah, I say it's, I'll go along with the general plan. If it's assigned for commercial use, I'll go for it.
All right. Uh, Commissioner St. John.
I uh, I'm on the side of the mixed use.
Commissioner Jacobson?
As I made myself clear earlier, mixed use.
All right. Um, so I mean, I think as we look at this, we obviously have a, a split commission on this. It's a, it is an intractable issue. On my side of it, I'm actually leaning towards leaving it commercial for the same reason that was, was raised by Commissioner Barron is that there's been a lot of community outreach over the years, um, and that have consistently wanted this to be that way. At the same time, the reason that I am, that I have hesitancy a little bit is I'm thinking about what I'm seeing built right now. It's not in Marina, but it's being built over off of Lightfire and the new townhouses between, between Second and, or, or General Jim Moore. And it's not the townhouses because that's residential. What is annoying me to no end is the fact that those townhouses are going in there and they're pretty, it's great for, it'll be great for the promenade. Because that's the nearest shopping center nearby. And so I think that'll benefit the city of Marina tremendously. At the same time, um, what is frustrating is that there is literally the old PX complex, post exchange complex that had a pizza place and a subway and a furniture store and a barber shop. And it had this capability of commercial, literally right next door. And the military decided to just close all those up and not develop those instead of trying to sublease those out to the city of Seaside to be developed. And I know specifically that the subway and the pizza place were doing phenomenal. Then those owners did not want to leave. The military forced them out. So that said, um, that mixed use side, I think, does have a very valid issue that when you have communities and if we're looking at, at a mixed use development, then we're providing an opportunity to the northern part of the city that actually goes along with the other development that we're building at the very northern end. And just because we're favoring a brand new developer that's putting in fourteen hundred homes and mixed use and has land watch and everybody else's approval does not mean that we shouldn't allow somebody who's been here for years and invested in our community that's an oper, that same opportunity to develop. What it doesn't provide is it doesn't provide a single guarantee that he is going to be able to build anything off of that by doing it. But that's not my concern. Um, as a developer, if he can't get along with, with potential buyers and everybody else, well, that's, that's on him. So that's, I mean, where I'm leaning right now overall. And that was why Guido, when I came back to this, I wanted to kind of look at the overall guidance of how we present this to the, the council. Because I think in the end, we'll probably go through this, we'll vote for this, we'll vote to pass this through. But we have three kind of specific things. So on the main plan, and so the way I would, would like to do this, if there's no more comments, then um, I guess, what is the right way to do this? What I would
So, so to the chair, I, so just so we can get out of here a decent hour.
That's what I want to do right now.
Uh, I'm, my, my recommendation would be to adopt the recommended motion and hopefully you can get a majority for that. And then for the three individual sub questions, you can just have a separate motion for each of those. And then we can just tabulate, you know, for each of the separate items, what was the will of the commission? So we can just have, have a very clear direction that we got from commission to council. That would be my recommendation to the commission.
Which is where I was hoping we could go to, which was basically have an overall motion and then three kind of subset questions that we're answering. That I don't necessarily, I don't even necessarily know they need to be motions.
I think you could do it under one resolution.
I think we can, we can have, I, I think the other way around would be, let's figure out what the answers are to the three questions. Roll those up into the motion, because those are the guidance that we're providing. Because like on the, on the first one, we'll go, we'll, we'll start with.
I, I, I just, because we've been dealing with one of these subset questions for over four years, I need to have a very clear record of what the commission's recommending so that there's no ambiguity about.
I think that's, it's gonna, it's gonna have that. It's just going to be in one motion. So the first one to me would be the first question, and we'll just start with, we'll start in reverse order. First question is Marina Landing. And do we want to adjust the land use of Marina of that piece, that parcel from commercial to mixed use?
Could I just?
Yes.
Point of clarification. You can leave all of these uses that are already in your draft and simply add mixed use development. That's in addition to all of these. I wouldn't like mix this whole entire paragraph. I would just say, you know, general commercial indicates lands designated for a broad range, blah, 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 and mixed use in suitable areas. Or so I would just build those two words into the
I'm fine with that. So the, the question one is what to do with the Marina landing site? And, and the answer would be that, that works.
Do we add, do we?
Do we add, do we add the use mixed, allow mixed use development into the current definition?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend.
I'm going to go around the commission. So I'm going to start with, I know I just did this, but I'm going to do it again. Commissioner Jacobson.
Yes, let's add it.
So yes, and yes is mixed use. Commissioner St. John.
Yes, mixed use.
Commissioner Chang. Yes, on adding mixed use? It's like I'm done with this, three hours. Commitment is, don't smile, answer me. Yes, yes or no?
I don't know why you keep on muting. My answer is yes.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Walton.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Barron. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rana. And I will say yes.
Why?
To be, what? So it would be, what? Six, one, two, three, four, five, six, 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 yes, and one, no?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be the first. The second question is on definition of opens, um, open space. And the answer is that the two parts, the first one is, do we want to remove the definition of active from open space? So around the room, yes or no? Yes, yes means that you want to remove the definition.
It's active recreation.
Active recreation. So yes would be you're removing it. So Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner St. John?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Rana?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So it'd be seven, okay. The second part of the open space is to modify the definition of open space to passive use with, that's, and what was the wording that we?
Noise index.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't just noise.
Nighttime wildlife. Yeah, other uses that do not impact wildlife or noise, nighttime noise.
Yeah.
Okay, so yes.
Just noise.
Means that you agree to the revised definition of passive. Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Commissioner St. John?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rana? I'll leave it backwards. Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
And I'll be yes. Okay. Third, eh, third question is, do we agree on the overall LUP with the exceptions that we just described in questions one and two? Commissioner?
Sorry. Sorry, Chair, thi- this is the motion, right?
Well, so do we just, so the question is, do we do that as, do we do that, do we just leave those two questions it is and then make the motion as is like that?
I, I think what you've done is just taken kind of straw pulls of, of all the component parts, and now you do the motion as amended by the.
Yeah, we have, we have the motion here.
Right.
So, I, I just make sure, that's fine with me too. We could have just done the third question and done it, or we can just roll the third question back up into the main motion.
As long as we do it.
As long as it's the same thing.
Yeah.
So the third motion, the third question is going to be the motion itself with the two, with the two exceptions. Or two amendments.
Amendments.
Two amendments, that's the right.
Three, right?
Three, there's three.
Three amendments, yeah, three, three amendments. Because one question has two sub.
Yes.
Okay, so you've already done it.
Yeah, I've already done it.
Would somebody else like to make the motion?
I can read it.
Okay, Commissioner Barron?
It's right on your screen, on the bottom.
I move to adopt PC Resolution twenty twenty five dash sixteen, recommending that the city council approve the draft land use plan portion of the city local coastal program update, subject to findings in SECWA exemption two one zero eight zero point nine and fifteen two five one F.
And with that, three amendments. With three.
With three amendments.
Sounds good. You want me to take roll call, Commissioner Chair?
Yes.
Did you get a second? I couldn't hear out here.
Yeah, Commissioner Rana seconded it.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Rana?
Yes.
Chair Woodson?
Yes.
Commissioner St. John?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. That finishes up our public hearings. So we have informational items. Guido, I think you have a quick announcement on that?
Uh, yes, Yolanda is gonna give an announcement.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sorry for the long meeting, but I'm just going to go over the twenty twenty six Punting Commissioners Academy Conference. Registration will be open early December. And the conference provides city officials with information about the roles and responsibilities of Punting Commissioners, offers a basic legal and practical framework. And the conference will be held at the Sheraton Park Hotel in Anaheim, um, March eleventh through the thirteenth. So I would like, you know, if you're, everybody can just let me know, um, who will be interested in attending. And then we can get registration ready by the last week of November, so we can be prepared and be on time, because I know the slots go very quickly in the beginning of December. So I, we will all be in contact and I will share more details with you as I receive them.
I am yes, because I actually can go this year. So.
Got it.
I, I would like to go as well.
What's that? Commissioner Walton, I think says yes to.
I know it's tax season, but, uh, I'm gonna.
Chance to break away for three days.
Yes.
I know.
All right, and the rest of them we'll get back to. Let's see, that's now, um, any other?
By the last week of November, maybe beginning of December, we can, you know, discuss and have our list of who will be going. And there's, you know, there's the time to register.
There are three slots, correct?
Yes, three slots.
Everybody else is gone, it's my turn now. All right, um, thank you so much.
I haven't.
You and I, neither of us have gone, and so we should go.
Exactly.
You should go, I was last standing.
See, she's gone. There you go. All right, announcements? None. Correspondence? Joinment?
I want to go home.